Last trank is 27 miles of scenic beauty. Welcome to the city council meeting, January 14th, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Thera?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Local 44 Representative Richard Stutzman, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. All in favor? Can I have a posting of the agenda, timing?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January 3rd, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on January 14th, 2000-- I'm sorry, that was January 11th, 2019.
19, thank you. So we have a ceremonial proclamation here. And I guess I can read it from right here. And let's see, who's going to receive this? I think Susan is going to receive this. Hi, Susan. I'll read it and let you handle from there. And comments as well. This proclamation, this week, January 20th, on the homeless count week. I know you've been active in that, thank you. Whereas the homeless is one of the most-- the homeless situation is one of the most pressing issues of our time and will require a coordinated collaborative effort to develop solutions. And whereas the 2019 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count will take place January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th of 2019, with thousands of volunteers conducting the annual street count enumeration in partnership with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. And whereas the purpose of this federally mandated count goes far beyond meeting a requirement and benefits service providers, policymakers, local governments, elected officials, and other stakeholders. Whereas the data obtained from the homeless count will be vital to ongoing implementation to the City of Malibu in a strategic homeless plan. And whereas the City of Malibu is committed to addressing homelessness from both a regional and local perspective and strongly encourages interested community leaders to volunteer during homeless count week 2019. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City of Malibu declares January 20th, 2019, is homeless count week. And Susan is going to receive this. Thank you very much for all the participation. And there we go. Okay, we're on to 2A, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda.
We had another presentation there.
Okay, it isn't on this one yet. Okay, I'll let you take it.
Tonight, Public Safety Manager Susan Duñez will be giving an update on some of the things upcoming on our public safety work plan. But before she gets started, one of her slides, the beginning slide, was to give a brief update on the storms that happened today and what's going to be happening this coming week. I just got off a call about five minutes ago with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Public Works, and the Los Angeles Fire Department, who are in the process of developing some mandatory evacuations for our community that will go into effect tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. As I said, I literally just hung up the phone, so I don't have the full list of information. I'm waiting to be handed that information, at which time I'll ask the mayor to allow me a moment to explain what neighborhoods will be evacuated and how the evacuations will take place. But I do-- did want to make sure that everybody knows that, as Susan is going to be talking about public safety. And we are expecting, starting tomorrow, a very strong storm expected to hit the Malibu area at approximately 11:00 a.m. We're expecting approximately four inches of rain in Malibu tomorrow. That's after today, where we've had a lot of rain, and Friday night, where we had a lot of rain, and our hills are very saturated. Tomorrow's storm will be followed by two other storms, one on Wednesday and one on Thursday, and possibly another storm on Sunday. So we are all approaching this as cautiously as we can. And so I will be interrupting the agenda at some point to give further information on that. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Public Safety Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva. So you've somewhat already covered this first slide with the storm update. We've been very fortunate up to this point with only minor mud and debris and intermittent road closures, but we are anticipating it could be worse than that, and we are gearing up for that. Storm operations, to let everybody know what we've been doing, city staff has been monitoring conditions and issuing alerts. We issued a number of alerts over the weekend in anticipation of the storms. Public Works has four crews working 24 hours a day. Three of those crews have blade trucks to help keep the roads clear. Heavy equipment is strategically staged in certain areas of the city, so it can be ready for when it's needed. Fire Department and County Public Works have augmented their staffing for mudded debris flow. And the City Emergency Operations Staff has been placed on standby as we speak. So in terms of looking forward and the things that I plan to do in the coming year, based on the experience we had last fall, we're going to be-- our emergency operations plan has been updated, and it's actually just been approved by the state. But we do want to look at some of the areas of the plan that didn't maybe work as well for us as we would like. So we're going to be looking at the plan, at the areas that we think we could probably improve on, including, we want to hire a traffic consultant to help us improve the evacuation plan. We want to relook at the repopulation policies to see if there's any room for changes there, and also to develop a more comprehensive communication plan. In terms of communications, that's a very specialized field, so we want to hire someone who's an expert in all areas of communications to assist us, not just for Malibu, but someone also has a lot of knowledge about communication systems throughout the Los Angeles County, so that we're working in conjunction with all our partners. We would like the plan to help us know how we can improve handheld radio capabilities, public radio capabilities through AM or FM station, and how we can work with our cellphone providers to make them more resilient. We also want to look at a siren warning system. We've already started researching siren warning systems, and we plan to present to council options in the future for you to consider that. We will also simultaneously apply for hazard mitigation grant funding to offset the cost. Just to give you a heads up, it'd probably run about a million dollars, so that's why we're going to apply for those funds. The emergency storage bins, some of the bins that we have throughout town, we have five of them throughout town, some of them need to be replaced. It's one of the issues when you have storage bins near the ocean, they tend to get rusty or moldy. We have a couple that need replacing, and we're in the process of doing that right now. We'll also be updating the contents of those emergency bins. We learned a lot through the fires of what was useful, what wasn't as useful, so we plan to kind of adjust what's in the bins. We'll be doing a lot of public education, including conducting our annual disaster notification test in September as part of National Preparedness Month. We plan to hold a number of preparedness workshops for the community and attend neighborhood meetings, both upon request and reaching out to HOAs, being proactive on that. We also plan to hold our Public Safety Expo again in September and possibly expand on what we did this past year. The Community Emergency Response Team, we want to conduct at least four CERT classes this year, so we can continue to expand our CERT team. And we want to work with the Sheriff's Department to see how we can improve their ability to move through roadblocks. During the fires, it was a little tough at times, but over time, they did start to be able to move around a little bit better. But we don't want to have to wait for that to happen. We want them to be recognized, just as well as our VOPs are. Neighborhood preparedness, in the mid-year budget, we are proposing a new staff position to develop and implement fire preparedness response plans. They're at a neighborhood level, not just one general one. All the neighborhoods in Malibu are different, have different needs and different issues, so we want to have neighborhood-level preparedness and response plans. We want to look at developing volunteer firefighter program, whether it be through call firefighter, fire brigades, you know, however we want to make it work, but we want to look at that and have that happen. And also conduct neighborhood evacuation drills. So in total, in terms of public safety funding requests that will be coming forward, there'll be a request for the fire safety liaison position, $50,000 for a traffic consultant and a communications consultant, $50,000 for CERT emergency bins, for replacing bins and restocking them, and $50,000 for a third volunteer on patrol vehicle. Many of you are familiar with the VOPs. They currently have two vehicles, and they really need a third vehicle to help them with all the things that they do. And we have also applied for $100,000 CAL FIRE FIRE PREVENTION GRANT that will also be used to help offset the neighborhood-level fire prevention and preparedness programs. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Susan. Appreciate that. And now we're moving on to 2A. First up is Isaac Burgess. Isaac Burgess, second call. Okay, there he is. After Isaac is Ted Vale. Some of you know the process. Try and move forward, it helps us move along. After Ted is Richard Stutzman. Evening, Isaac. You got it.
Hello. Thank you so much. Isaac Burgess, the fourth. I'm the Director of Malibu Schools Pathway with Santa Monica and Malibu Unified School District. I have with me this evening Dr. Shelley Nye, who's Principal of Malibu High Middle School, and Patrick Miller, who's the Principal of Webster Elementary. So thank you for having us here today to provide some updates on behalf of Dr. Droti and the school system. Craig Foster wanted to be here this evening, but he's actually giving a presentation here somewhere, so he wanted me to make sure that you knew that. So just wanted to provide some updates in terms of some actions that we've taken post-fires as a school district to continue to make sure that we keep our students and staff as safe as we possibly can. So in terms of notifying parents and the community, when we decide to close a school or-- and/or adjust the instructional date, principals have been communicating with their staff and their school families around our actions, when the decision is made to close school or to adjust the school date. Our goal and our aim has been, all things being equal, at 6:30 in the morning to begin that notification process via email or Twitter, or even phone calls to inform our staff and our families that either school is going to be open or school will be closed. So that's a protocol that we have in place. It has been working well so far. For the community, our Twitter account or handle is @MalibuPathway, and there's information that's on that Twitter site that gives updates concerning the schools. And again, the goal is to get that information out at least by 6:30 every morning. That is at least our goal right now. If an emergency occurs during the school day, our principals and our staff have been trained with emergency procedures, safety plans to implement, and so they've shared that with their staff. They have trainings, and we'll communicate to our families and community as soon as possible if an event occurs during the school day, and we ought to take emergency precautions. In terms of monitoring outdoor air quality index, which has been a concern, we monitor the SCQAD website, and they have a standard there, and it ranges from zero to 500, with zero being good and 500 range being very unhealthy. And so we monitor that, along with, we've installed air quality sensors at each of our campuses, and that is being monitored on a regular basis by our Facilities Department, as well as certified industrial hygienists to monitor that. On each school's website, there is a button there, a daily button that the community and families can click on to get a daily report of the air quality. Post-fires, it has been in the moderate range for the most part. It has gone to the unhealthy sensitive groups, but we have protocols in place that the principals are aware of, the staff is aware of, and this information is also on this district's website in terms of measures to be taken if, for instance, it enters into the unhealthy range for sensitive groups, which is like the third level, where we just limit, for those who may have asthma, something like that, we just limit their outdoor activities. If it gets above that, which fortunately, we have not necessarily had that to happen, there are other protocols that are taken, steps that are taken to address those issues. But if you smell smoke, we've instructed the principals, and they've shared with their staff, to move students inside. With that, also, we have upgraded our air filters in all of the classrooms and areas with forced air. We've upgraded from HEPA IVs to HEPA VIIIs, which is the filter, the highest filter level that our systems can handle.
So this is a good PA. I'm very encouraged that you're bringing it forward. I see you have two other speakers.
Yeah, they're going to share. Okay.
Okay, just so the people in the room--
They're not going to share anything?
Okay. Then they, you can, they're going to give you their extra minutes, so you can continue. I think this is very valuable, that we hear this in a public forum like this. I just want to let the other speakers know that three minutes is usually the courtesy, but because this is public information for the general public, please continue.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I'm almost done. So those are being inspected regularly, and they're being changed out as needed. So that's important. And then, any areas or classrooms or spaces that do not have forced air, we do have HEPA filters as well, the portable ones, to help with the air quality as well. Lastly, from my update, in terms of debris removal, we've been in contact. Thank you to Riva and to Susan and to Shay for being very responsive and being open to talk with me about when that process occurs. So we're just really wanting to get advance notice of when the debris removal will take place around our schools, so that we can be proactive and inform our families and inform the community. I've been reassured that that is a top priority, and I'm grateful and we're very appreciative for that. So we're still waiting to get some additional information, but as soon as we get that, we'll be communicating that information with our staff and with our families and with our communities in terms of what actions we're going to take. So hopefully, we'll get more information as to when those dates will occur around our campuses, and hopefully, we get enough advance notice to make sure we inform our school community. So thank you so much for this opportunity to provide some updates, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Did you also maybe want to mention something about the extra buses during some of these flood situations at the high school?
Yes. So today, the buses remained on campus, on the high school campus today, as well as the bus drivers. That is the plan for tomorrow as well, so if anything happens with the canyons, well, I know there's going to be an update about the evacuations that's going to occur tomorrow. But if we do have school tomorrow, we will continue to keep the buses on campus, as well as have bus drivers there present. So if anything happens with canyons, we're not waiting on a bus driver to try to get through some kind of way. So that's where we are with the buses at this point in time. So we are planning to have school open tomorrow, but if weather conditions changes or with the update with the evacuation, then we'll adjust as necessary.
Thank you, Isaac. I think that prepositioning has a lot of parents resting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, next up is Ted Vale, followed by Richard Stutzman.
Hi, Ted Vale from Big Rock, which could be the next area to catch fire. Hopefully not, we're doing everything we can up there to prevent that from happening. Our Big Rock Mason homeowners association is very active, and they're going to be more active in making sure that doesn't happen. The last speaker perked up my ears because he talked about sheltering in place. I hope that means a temporary sheltering in place, not a long-term one. We've seen the experience with Pepperdine, hardly any noticed anybody sheltering in place through 3,500 students, which drained a lot of the firefighters from other areas, I'm sure, when the fire on Friday night encircled Pepperdine. So that hopefully is just a temporary thing, in that the students will be transported away if the fire comes very close. I also have a couple of general comments about some petitions that are going around. There's a petition to recall Skylar and Rick from the council. And I just want to point out to those who are doing that, that to study the case of Josh Newman in Orange County, who, a Democrat who beat Republicans, and then they immediately went around to recall, and it took them about two years to get that done. They did get it done, but by that time, Skylar will be termed out, and who knows whether Rick will decide to run for reelection again. So it could very well be a very expensive and time-consuming waste of time. Also, and there's another petition going around to get Riva removed from her job, and I think that also is premature, if it ever needs to be done. I would call that premature ejection. And finally, I hope that something is done about, you saw this picture, of the trail of cars taking five hours to get out of Malibu. I talked to the new sheriff about this, gave him the picture. He was shocked. He said he hoped he could prevent this from ever being done again. So, and I hope you will work with him, because I know he's willing to have you work with him to better protect the City of Malibu without essentially putting a ring of police around the burned-out areas and preventing people like Mikey from ever getting out during the fire. And also CERT training. I'd hoped to do CERT training, but it filled up right away. You need more CERT training here in Malibu. I know it's coming in March, but there's a lot of interest in that, so please do something to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted and Richard. After Richard, we have Brent Woodworth. After Brent, we have Nareen Gunazi-- Gunasi-- Nareen. Go ahead, Richard, it's all you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. This is the rough recap of a statement I made before the Planning Commission the other night. I've provided you all the written statement that goes into a little bit more detail than I've got time to say tonight. City management needs to take a leadership role in Malibu's rebuild process from the 11-9 disaster. While required to adhere to the uniform building codes, the city's got a right to set their own standards for unique situations. We are not a cookie-cutter neighborhood with only three floor plans. All our houses are different with unique requirements. Many builders agree that current rigid building codes can hamper creative innovations in housing design. These modified containers is probably a good example of that. Here's some other suggestions I hope you'll consider. Use city-owned property to set up a co-op-based building supply yard. The PCH Heathercliff property and/or the Edison staging area are two possible sites. Stock only essential building materials, lumber, cement, nails, drywall, et cetera. Maybe even offer free coffee. Sell materials at a fixed rate over costs, and this could very easily be a financially self-supporting venture. When I presented this idea to the Planning Commission, the issue came up whether or not an EIR might be required if they did that. What kind of nonsense, that's the kind of nonsense a city has to avoid. This would be a temporary, non-invasive use of existing city vacant land, not strip mining. Get residents and families back onto their property. Let them build ADUs on permanent foundations and keep them as ADUs post-construction. This might even help bring the city into compliance with state laws. Work with the county to waive the water flow and driveway with requirements for rebuilds. Make it clear to the county that they need to cooperate with us, especially since the lack of resources and mismanagement we received on 11-9. Yes, we need the updated infrastructure of District 29 water, but they should not be allowed to hold fire victims hostage to secret private agreements from years past. Allow more flexibility for the rebuild process. Rather than dictate same footprint only, allow the moving of foundations small amounts to update setbacks and improve site needs. Structure the permitting process so an owner and their team can meet with building and safety on the same day in person to review plans and get signed off by every department in one sitting. If a resident did have an unpermitted addition for years, such as a converted attached garage, and it was included in the original footprint on record, let them rebuild it as it was. Then it will be permitted and up to code if it wasn't before. Lastly, update current septic requirements, which are based on old high-flow fixtures. If a permittee had a possibly unpermitted bathroom of old fixtures and no septic issues, let them replace it with new low-flow fixtures connected to their existing functional septic system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. We got your abbreviated message and then the long-term one here. Thank you. We're up Brent, and then after Brent, Nareen. After Nareen is J.D. Slajow-Hoheart. J.D., okay, you got it, Brent.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor, and council members, the city manager and the attorney, and also members of the community. My name again is Brent Woodworth. I happen to be the chairman and CEO of the L.A. Emergency Preparedness Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the reason I'm here today is that this is the first day that we're starting proactive interviews of folks here in Malibu who stayed and defended their homes, their businesses, and their neighborhood during the Woolsey fire. This is an independent study. It is designed to be completely transparent, non-bias, just get to the facts. And we are doing this in conjunction with experts from UCLA, USC, Cal Poly Pomona, from Berkeley, along with the Natural Hazard Center and the University of Colorado, experts from the National Fire Protection Association, and from NIST back in Washington, D.C. I want to thank you for the participation that has occurred so far, and actually encourage as many folks in Malibu who did stay and defend their homes to please get in contact with us and register so we can talk with you. All information is confidential and private, and they can register at wildfire@laepf.org. Again, it's wildfire@laepf.org, and we will set up times to interview the folks. When the study is completed, we will be producing those results for the public, for the city council, for the L.A. County, and for the state. Again, everything is completely transparent, and we really hope to provide facts that will lead towards additional positive change for Malibu and a lot of other areas in California that face wildland fires in the future. So I thank you very much for your time and look forward to talking to as many folks as we possibly can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brent. I appreciate that effort, and I met your team, and they seem very well-educated. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Nareen Gunaz-Ekra from Schmitz &amp; Associates. I'm here representing the Seaboard Trust on the Seaboard Road DIR project. I'm here to respond to some comments that have been made by Mr. Craig Hill and Deirdre Roney at previous council hearings on December 10th and 18th, and to clear those up. To refresh your memory, this is a lotline adjustment between four legal lots, not a tract map that's developing 20 lots, as has been alleged. The EIR, the environmental impact report for this project, will also assess the cumulative impacts of three other lots in the vicinity, but that are not part of the project. In previous hearings, it was alleged that we'd violated the 2015 City Council resolution and are proceeding with improving Seaboard without permits, graffitiing the road and placing drill rigs on the road. We are in fact preparing-- We are in fact preparing a conceptual plan to bring Seaboard Road up to Fire Department compliance, as requested by the Fire Department and the city, and this is part of the EIR process. As standard practice, we temporarily mark utilities on, within the easement to ensure that these can be taken into account in the design and also to avoid these during any geological testing. Currently, our testing plan, which utilizes hand labor, is under review from the city, and once that is completed, we will request constructive feedback from the neighbors. Mr. Hill also recommended that the city council should stipulate that Seaboard Road not be used as access for this project. The applicant has provided exhaustive information to staff over the last 10 years of this project regarding legal access, and as late as June 2018, staff has advised us that they're confident that we have legal access alongside private Seaboard Road. It is our understanding that the EIR consultant will be performing a logical analysis of all the access options, including the option of constructing a road to PCH across 400 feet of one-to-one slopes and Esha Habitat, and to determine which is the least environmentally impactful. Requesting that the city council interfere with the sequel process like this is asking the council to engage in inappropriate interference of the administrative process. We look forward to working with city staff to complete the comprehensive EIR that looks at this project and bring it in front of the city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. J.D., you're up. Coming from the back. After J.D., Marissa, you're good, and John Maza. You guys are all lined up. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to tell you the story about the little boy that changed my life. A little boy that I just finished writing a book about. My best friend, who passed away at 10 years old to sickle cell disease, my best friend named Luke Bodden. My name is J.D. Slackert, and I'm a 24-year-old author from Malibu, California. And when I met Luke Bodden, I was a 17-year-old, wide-eyed, snot-nosed, high-school kid playing basketball, and this girl came up to me and said, "Hey, my little brother wants to meet you and play basketball with you." And I said, you know, "Sure, sounds great. I'll get around to it when I can." And she said, "No, you know, it has to happen next week." And I said, "Why?" And she said, "Because my little brother, who's six years old, is about to go into a one-year isolation at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, for a bone marrow transplant, and the last thing he wants to do before he does that is meet you and play basketball with you." And ever since then, my life has never been the same, and that girl who told me that is here with me today, his sister back there. So when Luke was in the hospital, I would go and spend every waking second that I could with him during that year of isolation. And he actually had two photos above his bed to help him fight during that year, and one was of me and one was of Matt Kemp. And I used to tell his dad how funny that was, and he said, "That's just how my son thinks of you, not as some 17-year-old high-school basketball player, but as some superstar athlete." But unfortunately, Luke lost his life at 10 years old on September 14th, 2016. And then on September 14th, 2018, I published my first book called Moonflower. And I was traveling all over the place, doing tons of publicity for the book and for this little boy that changed my life, when on November 9th, I lost my home in the Woolsey fire. And I wrote this book to help people dealing with loss. And so I decided the next day, with my team and my agent and manager, that we would start something called Moonflowers for Malibu, where 100% of the book's proceeds would go to the victims of the Woolsey fire. So I'm here tonight because I want to continue to find ways to help raise money for this beautiful community that you guys all serve in, in my way of doing that. Whether that's through school assemblies, through getting involved with anything that you guys are doing, I'm constantly searching for new ways to help get this story out there to help even more people in need because there are a lot of people that do need this support system. I've traveled all over the country now, and in a recent interview, I was asked if I could tell Luke anything, what would I tell him? And I said that I would not rest until every single person knows his story. And I will end with this note also. I wrote Moonflower to help people dealing with loss, and now buying a copy can do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, J.D. Turned out to be a fine young man, even though you throw elbows a little bit when I was playing with you. Thank you very much, sir.
Sorry. Mike and Scott, I appreciate you working with both of you over email. Nice to meet you both.
Thank you, J.D. Marissa, you're up. Thanks. After Marissa, John Maza. After John Maza, Terry Lukoff. Thank you. Evening, Marissa.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here to request, again, as I did before the Planning Commission, that temporary power be given to the properties that have, where they've lost their homes. Those of us in the building industry, whether it be an architect, electrician, are not only being turned down by the county, but by the city. But we fully understand that a valid builder permit is a typical guideline in order to obtain that temporary power. However, I think in this instance, it should be modified, and the reason being is because as the Planning Commission had a very intensive hearing the other night, and they discussed size of the temporary structures that they'll be recommending to you for review and approval, and occupancy, and things like that, we think that it's important that these people start being able to take step one forward in the recovery of their victimization from this fire. I think also, too, if there's a concern about abuse, that since the Planning Commission has also set out some guidelines regarding timeframes in which you need to apply to rebuild your residence, that those be followed. And if anybody does abuse it, there's an option. The building official can call Rod King at Edison and say, "Turn it off." There's always an option to just turn it off. Now, the day worker center, which recently, I believe, is getting a new trailer or has gone a new trailer, for many years was on a temporary overhead power pole. Then they went regular power. They connected the old sheriff's station. Now they've got a temporary overhead power pole connected to the temporary overhead power for the construction of the new college. So I think if it's good enough in that situation, it should be good enough for the victims of our fire, and I just would like your consideration in doing that. And I also would like to thank Rob Duboe for his plan about allowing people to drain their pools and put them into the, um, our new treatment plant. And also that if the city has any architectural plans, and, and Ms. Hogan can support this, I think, especially since many of the homes were done by architects who, at the time, didn't have any stamp or didn't have any kind of, um, thinking of the word. Anyway, but they give them copies of the architectural plans because the insurance companies are making it very difficult for people to attest to what they had. They're going to have to meet building code anyway, so it's not going to be a matter of they won't be to code. It's just for the footprint and the, for them to be able to explain to anyone who'll design a new structure what they had. Some people will build new. Some people will want just what they had, as Walt Keller did when he lost his house years ago up where he lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. John Maza, you're up once again.
Once again.
Followed by Bruce, after you.
The people who got burned out should watch or read the staff report in the last Planning Commission meeting. We, we did a lot to speed the process up and, and in consultation with staff and the Coastal Commission, and it should move very quickly. So we're trying to take care of the people who were burned out, but we're missing one thing. They need a place to live. And about six months ago, the Planning Commission made a decision that short-term rentals were not allowed in our code. And in September, the council made the same decision, and they gave a instruction to have our city attorney come back with the method to do that. Now, then we had a fire. We lost over 400 houses. We have 400 families or more looking for a place to live. Some of them have insurance, some of them don't. But we're losing quite a few of those people to other cities because the rent in Malibu, because of gouging, and because it's Malibu, is astronomical. The cheapest rent I have seen is $1,500 for a room in a mobile home. That's the cheapest I've seen. I've seen some $70,000 a month ones also. They used to be 30. So we need to do something, and what we have in Malibu is we have short-term rentals, over 600, probably more like 1,000, that are operating illegally. And nothing is being done about it because the last instruction was, "Well, until Christie comes back, let them do whatever they want." Well, those people need to rent those houses. And I talked to some people that are familiar with the school, and you can ask Isaac. Our school population is down dramatically since the fire. The people are gone. Some of them are driving their kids back over the hill because they're in high school and they're in some advanced class, but a lot of them are just in Camarillo High School or Camarillo Junior College or whatever. And we're losing a town that is a residential town, and the purpose of, of our general plan is to keep it a residential town, and we're turning it into a motel. I sent you an article today about the New York Times, by the New York Times, where it's banned, and there's 150-unit apartments being turned into Airbnbs illegally. So we need to think about the residents who want to stay in Malibu and think about what happens when they come back, if, if they come back. Do we want a town that's got 13,000 people, which 9,000 are tourists every night? Do we want that? You have to think into the future, and you have to help these people. People are actually sleeping in their cars. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We've got Terry Lukoff up next. Evening, Terry. Followed by Bruce, and then Richard Saul after that. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I feel very lucky to be the leading tip kind of of the fire rebuilds. I've received planning approval, and I'm going into the building for a guesthouse on Clover Heights. A couple of things in being in this leading edge that are concerning of me is I don't believe that we need to be filling up our landfills with everybody's foundation. I don't believe foundations, every single foundation should be ripped out. I believe that people ought to have the ability to have a structural engineer come in and say, "This foundation is solid, and this foundation is sane," and that the city would accept that. The second thing is I agree that power poles ought to be expedited to be put on the property, whether, um, uh, that can be done any faster than after debris removal. If it can be done before debris removal, that might be helpful to a lot of owners. And people that are applying for power poles are hung up by the city saying, "We're not ready yet." And, and I don't believe that that's a, a correct thing. And the final thing is that in, in getting the planning approval for the guesthouse rebuild, the environmental department at the city of Malibu says, "Well, not only do you have to prove that that septic system is good and working, but, but we want you to take the other house that didn't burn down, and we also want you to, to open up that septic system and, and prove that that one is working." I do not see how that would come within the confines of being good for fire rebuilds to help expedite people, to help people keep their costs down, to help streamline the process. So I, I'm asking that the city council kind of look at that if you're doing a fire rebuild and, and, and you have to prove the septic system, that you prove the septic system on what you're going to rebuild, that you're not going to have to approve the septic system on, on other structures that weren't even damaged in the fire. And I, I hope to be back and helpful to you, since I am trying to get everything built. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Terry. And now we have Bruce. After Bruce, Richard Saul. After Richard, Shay Moss.
Good evening, everybody. So it's been a month, nearly a month since the last meeting of council, and I remember standing here nearly a month ago, asking that the council direct the city to create a timeline so that the process can be judged by standards rather than just, "We're doing our best." And I'm sure everybody is doing their best, but, but a timeline. And I remember Councilmember Pearson saying that that was what is done in business, and that made a lot of sense. I know a month has gone. I don't think we even have a timeline or a direction to have a timeline. Now, there are, there were a lot of great ideas tonight by Richard, by Marissa, by John, by Terry. For every one of those great ideas, there's probably at least 10 others. I've seen a lot of them on, on Facebook by other people. I've, I've heard them in the public by talking to people. The other day I posted that what this city needs is somebody who will focus specifically on relief, recovery, and rebuilding, and not on the ordinary business of the city. And the ordinary business of the city is important. It needs to go on. It needs to be business as usual for a city to operate, but we are in a crisis. We're in a post-fire crisis, and there needs to be a dedicated person as well that's focusing on all these great ideas. And there needs to be rules and regulations that are specifically applicable to people who've lost their homes. In the law, there are permissible distinctions between people that are otherwise similarly situated based on economic differences and situational differences. So we're not talking about discrimination of any sort. This, this council has, and you can ask your city attorney, has the authority to create rules and regulations that apply specifically to people who lost their properties or whose properties were significantly damaged. They don't have to follow the same rules if you create different rules for them. And I think somebody who could focus on this and be focused exclusively on this and be talking to members of the public and working with them, having them come visit and express their concerns, could be helping you figure out what differences need to be made so that people can efficiently, economically, and expeditiously get back into their homes. And so I echo everything that these other people that spoke before me said because they, they made a lot of great points, and I don't need to stand here and repeat what they had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, and Richard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney. My name is Richard Saul. I'm here to address one issue only, and that's about temporary power poles. Very boring subject, but vital to a many, a lot of the fire victims that want to maintain and repair their, their, their homes and their property. Last week, in attending the Planning Commission meeting, I, I heard the Planning Commission resolve to ask the city council to consider their policies regarding water tanks, basements, and power poles. Regarding power poles, I have clients and friends that cannot maintain their pool without electricity, cannot maintain their property security without electricity, cannot maintain the irrigation of their plants and their lawns without electricity. Since the period of time it's going to take for them to rebuild their home and get that building permit prior to building their home is significant, I'm asking the, the city council to consider giving a direct, um, instruction to the building department to allow fire victims to get temporary power poles so that they can maintain and repair their property. If we don't allow that, then their damages and their losses will increase because of their plant life will die, their pools will develop molds and bacteria, and there's, they won't be able to monitor the security of their property that's maintained by electricity. It's actually a very simple request. I'm not insulting any of your, any of your intelligences. I think you all know this, but apparently the public has to make a statement like this. But rather than push us down the path and wait for the Planning Commission to write a formal report regarding the request for that consideration, if one of you or more of you would just consider turning around, talking to Craig George or Bonnie Blue and saying, "What do we need to do to immediately release permits only for fire victims for temporary power poles for the interim period?" And by the way, I'll leave you with this last thought. And by the way, I'll leave you with this last thought. To build a house in Malibu, particularly on the beach, you're going to get a temporary power pole for two to three years. So, it's not like we don't, they're not legal, they're not safe. We give them out already for, for people rebuilding their house. Let's give it to people that want to maintain their property during this rebuild process. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Richard. Carol Moss is over on the left.
Rick has invited us to put our two cents. I'm here to put in mine. Uh, Susan, that was, did she leave? That was a great presentation, uh, on disaster planning. I would really appreciate if we could have some kind of schedule set up so we can account for how it's been accomplished, uh, some meetings, some program, uh, just to keep track so these marvelous plans don't fall through the cracks because we need them, we need them desperately. We've been doing this on housing and it's been very effective on homelessness. I mean, also, I want to suggest bringing in an outside disaster planner just for consultation to look at our plans, somebody whose life's work has been in this field because it's new to us. We're, we're experienced in disasters, but not like this. And, um, we also have the research universities to consult. UCLA has taken environment, is really interested in the Woolsey Fire. They could be of help. Secondly, um, I'm going to propose something that will sound absolutely nuts. It's on the subject of evacuation and that's evacuation by sea. We have Paradise Cove, we have Belvo Pier and that in our planning, we have something in place in case we need it. We may never need it. I hope we don't need it, but we don't know what's coming down the pike. We're not Dunkirk, we're Malibu, but let's think about it at least. And thirdly, on the subject of affordable housing, we hear lots of complaints about our staff not living in Malibu, not understanding our problems. We do nothing to make it possible for them to live in Malibu. And this is something I know little about, a lot of you are much more expert, but the Chinese do say crisis is opportunity and the Chinese may be right in this respect. Can we use this opportunity of rebuilding? We have large lots, large properties to incentivize homeowners to put more modular housing on their property. I'm not talking about slum housing. I'm talking, there's all kinds of kind of wonderful modular housing coming down the pike which we haven't seen before and it could make it possible for our teachers, for, for our, our public employees, for our workers to live here. We would also need to make sure they don't, they don't become Airbnbs, that they are rental properties. So, that's, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Carol will be followed by Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Paul Grisanti.
Thank you for letting me speak. A couple of things I wanted to talk about were, um, in the past, we've talked about having streetlights. Now that we've upgraded for our dark skies, it would be nice if we turn that into public facilities and looked at our lighting in the streetlights that are non-intersections and trying to get those to come into compliance with the dark skies ordinance and improve the lighting that we have on PCH in the areas that we already have lighting. The other thing I wanted to talk about, last Thursday at the planning commission meeting, there was an item with regard to Fire Station Eighty-Eight being possibly located on our new property that we've acquired in the civic center. Um, I'd like to know, has the county already looked at their county facility right next door where the old courthouse was and is essentially abandoned? Have they considered redeveloping that site for the relocation of the fire station? I think we've worked and spent a lot of time and money trying to acquire property for our civic use and while a fire department is very important, we also have a lot of needs for our community that we need also. And since the county does have readily available land right next door, why isn't that being looked at first before we give up our hard-earned civic land, city of Malibu land? The last comment I had, it's going to be very controversial, but I, I have to disagree with, um, Mr. Mazza with regards to short-term rentals. Even if short-term rentals are banned within this community, there's no guarantee that those property owners are going to turn those into long-term rentals. And I think it's very dangerous to force property owners who they can rent to and who they can't rent to. Short-term rentals absolutely need to have rules and restrictions so that they're good community neighbors, but I'm very, very concerned about telling somebody who you can rent to and who you can't rent to. And if somebody has a rental out there that they've been using short-term, I think it's, you know, morally the right thing to do to turn that in and offer as the long-term, but we, I don't think it's right that the city forced those property owners to do that. Other than that, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And Paul is followed by Richard Lawrence, followed by Elizabeth Stevens.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council, and thank you so much for getting up every morning and looking in the mirror and saying, "Today I will be part of the solution." And this is one of those days that you get to be part of the solution. The, uh, what we've heard about the temporary power poles obviously needs attention. It will take none of your time. It's already been approved by the planning commission. You ought to just do it. The other thing that I was hoping that I would hear at this meeting and I, maybe we could make it a regular thing, is I'd love to hear how many people, I'm glad to hear that Terry has made it through planning and now he's in the process of getting his first permit and doing all this technical stuff and hopefully he'll be able to pull a permit in six months. And I'd like to see other people trying to make that happen within six months. And there's no, really no reason that you shouldn't be able to do it as long as they don't make it more than 10% larger than the original house. And it's, it's a, it's a goal that I'd love to see building and safety and, and the planning department embrace and I'd love to see you guys embrace it as well. So, thank you so much and I'm looking forward to lots of people announcing that they got a permit at these meetings in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Richard Lawrence, followed by Elizabeth.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Wagner. Uh, I'm Richard Lawrence, the president of the Malibu Township Council, here to make some suggestions, uh, based on what everybody basically has been speaking about in terms of the fire and fire and emergency preparation. There was a whole lot of dialogue that I read through about six hundred emails that was provided to our council, uh, from the, uh, from Mayor, then Mayor Rick Mullin, from City Manager Riva Feldman and our public safety, uh, person. A lot of dialogue that went back and forth that somehow didn't go back and forth. It was, one side was put together, you know, put out there. Rick, I, I must tell you that I think your job of, uh, public speaking and your radio and TV appearances, a number of which I've seen, were excellent, painting a picture of something that I don't think was quite accurate. And that is that there was a lot of confusion and a lot of people who were, uh, really distraught and I think still are about the lack of some kind of plan that everybody knew what to do. The idea, I mean, I saw emails coming from, uh, both you and, and Ms. Feldman at five o'clock in the morning, at two-thirty in the morning. You guys worked incredibly long hours and, and our current mayor too and, and the other council members, Skylar, Mikey, everybody. But what we need, we think, the council, our council at least discussed the other night, we need an independent council. We need somebody who has not got a property stake here or, uh, is too close to the situation, but a company to come in here and interview everybody and everybody, but having no basic point of view other than coming up with a plan that it was nice to see the public safety, you know, what all those things are going to happen tonight, but where were they a month ago? So, uh, if anything, we're going to survive, but I just look at the lagoon as I drive by frequently and think how awful and, and terrible it is and all the amount of work that went into, you know, finding people to, uh, make a proposal. Am I finished? No. With that in mind, I would just hope that an independent company who does this, city planning people, so that we actually know and distribute to everybody through either the media or just the, uh, you know, the mailing list that the city has, so everybody knows what to do. But thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Elizabeth, our final speaker.
Good evening, council members. Um, I'll make this really quick. First, I come here to my support for the people who have lost their homes. We haven't forgotten. I did not lose my home, thank goodness, but my heart goes out to the people who have. And when you have people like Marissa who are experts in the field of building and they know all the outside people, to heed what they say and try and listen to their recommendations, I think would really help those fire victims to rebuild faster for not just the, but I'm actually here too for the, it's the wildlife that also lost their homes. And I'm quite concerned, I travel Canaan, um, pretty much every day and I'm watching the wildlife that is trying to find a new home and they're getting hit and killed on Canaan. And I'm sure it's happening on Malibu. I just happen to drive Canaan all the time. And so, I'm quite concerned because the speed limit is there, there, everything is black and they have nothing. And so, I'm hoping, I didn't notice any in our Malibu city limits, maybe we could put wildlife crossing to slow down and have people aware, especially because right now the lighting isn't even there. You know, we have intermittent, um, places where the, the lights are, but most of the time it's pretty dark. So, if people could be aware that we are, we're killing our wildlife and they, they survive the fire and then they lose their life getting struck. Also too, one of my concerns is, um, birds of prey. We've got a lot of trees that are being cut down. I'm actually looking at some of the diameters of these trees. They, I'm just guessing, they look anywhere from fifteen to twenty inches in diameter. I see some trees that are marked on, um, PCH. I've seen some on Canaan, on Malibu that are being taken down. We've lost, my understanding, um, through the parks is that we've lost almost twenty-three thousand trees. If we've lost that many trees, our birds of prey are really in trouble. So, we, I don't know if there's an arborist that's going out and determining what trees need to be cut, but, um, if we can take a look at that, I think that would be really, you know, a great thing to do to save our wildlife. Thank you.
And the canopy thanks you too. Thank you. Okay, we're to be written in oral communications from your commissions and council members. And I, go ahead.
Could I, I'm sorry, could I just jump in, um, a little unusually, just because I know we have, um, both some new council members, but also we have some people who are new to coming to the meetings. And I just, I just want to point something out that the, um, this, the meeting is conducted in accordance with the Brown Act, the state open meeting law, and there are a lot of rules governing how you conduct yourself, all aimed at making sure that the public is notified in advance what it is that you're going to talk about so that they have an opportunity to make a decision whether they want to come down and participate in the meeting. And so, the Brown Act absolutely forbids you from talking about things that are not on your agenda because the posted agenda is what other people have made their decision about whether or not to come to the meeting. At the same time, you are completely set up by the Brown Act because the Brown Act also, um, almost conversely provides that in a regular meeting, you must give an opportunity to the public to speak to items that are not on your agenda. So, here you are not allowed to speak about things that are not on your agenda, but the community and, and the public are welcome and required to be allowed to speak about things that are not on your agenda. And this is the moment where that strange conflict happens. Under the Brown Act, you basically have five things that you can do, two, five options that you can choose upon and none of them involve discussing it and coming to any kind of an agreement among yourselves about things that are not on the agenda. But you can individually make a brief and the, believe it or not, Brown Act actually uses the word brief, brief comment about what you've heard. You can ask a question of staff, a factual question. You can refer the matter back to staff or to one of your subcommittees to work on and maybe report back to you. Or you can ask that it be placed on a, a future agenda so that you could actually have the conversation. And I say that not just to admonish you, but also to, uh, make sure everyone who's brought their ideas to you knows that it's not that you don't care about their ideas, it's that you're legally not able to take them up tonight, um, in that fashion, knowing that there are people out there who might have differing opinions who wouldn't have been on notice, um, of it. That's the general, uh, what I wanted to say, but more specifically, I also want to mention about the Seaboard Road extension because now in the last two meetings, you're really getting a strange debate between opponents and proponents of that project. And I urge you to just stay out of it. We have a process for making applications. It will come to you if it does in due course. There's nothing that you can say at this point that would be meaningful to the application process because you don't have all of the evidence in front of you and these things are being brought up to you at the public hearing, I mean, at the, uh, the public podium at a time when it's not even noticed. So, that's all I have to say. Sorry.
Thank you, Christie. And you got a copy of what we got?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Uh, who would like to start? Okay, we have Riva for an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I have quite a few things to, uh, update everybody on. I'm going to start by giving you an update on what our, uh, building, safety and planning staff have been doing in, as it applies to the fire rebuild. We've issued, uh, one debris removal permit, which actually the debris removal on that property started today. So, um, as you know, there are two options for property owners to take. They can opt in to the Cal Recycle Program or they can opt out and conduct the debris removal themselves. We have a hundred and forty applications for the opt-in program and fifteen applications for the opt-out, uh, program. So, obviously there's quite a few property owners who still need to make a decision whether they're going to opt in or opt out and that deadline for the opt-in is January twenty-eighth. So, I encourage people to, uh, make that decision. We do have a member from the county public work staff here at City Hall every day until three o'clock who can answer questions and help people fill out, um, the forms for either the opt-in or the opt-out, uh, option. Um, our building and safety, uh, department has also issued six building permits, uh, to aid in the rebuilding of partially damaged structures. And, um, our planning department has received and approved thirteen like-for-like fire rebuild applications and we've approved twelve temporary housing trailer applications. Um, we've received three rebuilding applications where the owners are asking for additional square footage, so that's, uh, not the like-for-like and those are being reviewed by city staff. Um, I have been, uh, meeting with the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Los Angeles County Public Works and Supervisor Kewell's office to get a decision from the fire department on what they're going to allow, um, for the city and also for that incorporated area for the fire rebuild, uh, codes, whether, um, if you're a like-for-like, whether you're going to have to be bringing your property up to code if it was not up to the fire code. I do not have that answer yet. The fire department is working on that. I'm meeting again with them this week and I'm really pushing them to make a decision for our community. I know it's leaving a lot of people in limbo, unable to decide what they should or could do. And so, um, we are really pushing hopefully to get that information so that we can provide that back out to our community. And the supervisor's office has been very supportive of getting this resolved so that people can move on with rebuilding. We've received, um, and processed over a hundred and eighty public record rec, requests. Those are people asking for records for their properties. We have about a hundred and seventy-five pending records requests that we are also going through. Um, we've received information and records from the city, uh, from the county tax assessor's office and we are also making those available to residents if we don't have information on their property. Let's see, what else? The FEMA deadline to register your property, you'll register, uh, with FEMA, um, to either be eligible for a FEMA grant or SBA loans is January thirty-first. Again, I encourage both residents and businesses and people who work here in the city to take the time to register. You can register online with FEMA, um, but if you do that, you will be eligible for an SBA loan, uh, which is, uh, up to two hundred thousand dollars at a three percent fixed rate for thirty years. So, I really want... So I really want to encourage people to take advantage of that program, but you cannot be eligible unless you've registered with FEMA. Frontier, I know a lot of people are, have had issues with Frontier. Many of those people have contacted me. If you are having problems with Frontier, either not responding or your service has not been restored, please feel free to contact me directly. I am able to get some headway on that. Behind me on the screen, you'll see some information, there's a phone number, both for residences and businesses, and there's also a website that Frontier has put up. They lost and they're replacing about 150 poles and 80 miles of cable in the Malibu area. They've received 1,200 requests for service, and they've completed 900 of those service requests. So there's still people who are having Frontier problems, which interrupts both internet and phone. They also asked me to remind customers that if you lost your home, or you've had issues where you need some relief on your bill, to make sure that you contact them. They have offered relief on bills to 185 customers in Malibu. I'm going to ask Craig George, my building official, to come up and answer and give an update on the temporary electric poles, so that everybody can hear from him where we're at. So Craig, if you could come up and do that, please.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner and City Council. I think first what we need to do is define what is a temporary power pole. There's a lot of misconception about what that is. A temporary power pole is a pole on which you mount a meter, and on below the meter are plugs that you plug in, equipment to build houses. Temporary power poles are issued during construction, Richard Soule mentioned that it's issued during construction. That is very correct. The problem that we're having is temporary power poles are not made to energize structures, gates if you want, or pools, because people would have to run extension cords, other things to get to those facilities, and power them up using that. And that, that's just not safe. And probably if you connected it, disconnected it, you'd burn up the equipment, you could burn up the other structure that you're trying to energize. What we have been doing, and we've worked with quite a few people, is to find a permanent solution. Now, you could call it temporary power, but it's not a plug-in type of a device. They put in a, they put in a meter, the meter is feeding whatever the service is that they want, whether it's a pool, landscaping, the guest house, and it's done safely, it's permanent, and we don't know how long a temporary power pole could be there for. It could be there for a year, it could be there permanently, if they decide not to rebuild. But with a permanent power solution, then everything is safe, it's energized, it's the same process. We've issued a number of these already for various things. So if these folks would just come in, work with building and safety, we'll get the power they need, and it'll do so in a safe manner.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate the definition there.
Thank you, Craig. I also wanted to let everybody know that we did do a direct mailing to all properties that were burned in the Malibu area, making sure that people know what resources are available to them from the city. We have been running full-page ads in both the Malibu Times and the Malibu Surfside every week, and we'll continue to do that with information on how property owners can get information about the rebuild process. And we do have a dedicated website, malaburebuilds.org, that has all of that information on it as well. So just want to share those resources with everybody and make sure that the community knows that the city and the city staff is here to help them through this process. Any types of questions, they should come to City Hall. In the upstairs lobby, there is a staff person there, it's our fire rebuild counter, and they are available all day, every day, during lunch, Monday through Friday, to answer questions on the rebuild process. So with that, I was just handed the press release from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department regarding the upcoming evacuations tomorrow. So please bear with me as I read this, but I think it has some very important information that everybody needs to be aware of. So the Unified Command has identified properties in the Woolsey Fire burn area that may be subject to a high volume of mud and debris flow. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department personnel will be out this evening to give residents at the identified properties advanced evacuation notice. Mandatory evacuations will begin tomorrow, January 15th, at 8:00 a.m. Specific properties in the following areas will receive door-knock notification and a posted notice at their residence this evening and again tomorrow morning. Those neighborhoods are Corral Canyon, El Nido, Escondido, Old Chimney, Escondido Drive, Latigo Canyon, Malibu West, Tranqus Canyon, Malibu Lake, all of Ramirez Canyon Road and adjacent streets, all of Paradise Cove Mobile Home Park and Restaurant. The areas identified above are at high risk for potential mud and debris flow. These properties are adjacent to steep slopes or sit at the base of drainages. Not all properties may directly be affected by mud and debris flow, however, all roads in the area are subject to closure, and residents may have limited access in and around the evacuated communities. Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have established patrols to monitor evacuated neighborhoods for looting and to ensure public safety. All Woolsey Fire burn areas continue to be subject to possible evacuations. County public safety authorities are issuing these additional precautions. Communities in low-lying areas or next to steep slopes or waterways are particularly at risk of falling debris and mud flow. Residents living in homes with limited roadway access or that can become isolated for an extended period due to the storm should consider leaving before storms arrive. Homes or neighborhood with, neighborhoods with gates should consider leaving them open to avoid being trapped due to mud flow accumulation. Even one inch of mud can restrict gate operations. If your property becomes unsafe and there is no time to evacuate, seek safe, high ground. Do not attempt to cross flooded areas and never enter moving water. Since all canyon roads may be blocked and subject to closure for extended period, periods, residents should have enough food, water, medication, and supplies for at least seven to 10 days for all family members, including pets and large animals. For additional resources and evacuation information, please visit lacounty.gov/lareign. So to follow up on that, the Sheriff's Department will be going door-to-door to specific properties. They've identified several hundred homes in Malibu that will be evacuated starting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. My staff is in the process of crafting a reverse 911 call that will go out to all of those neighborhoods, letting them know that they will be receiving contact from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and evacuations will start at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow. We're working with the Red Cross to identify shelter locations, and that information will be made available. We'll be opening our emergency operations center at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow, and we'll run it 24 hours a day until the situation passes. The weather that we're expecting tomorrow is two to four inches, starting at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. Then we'll get a break for a few hours, and then another storm on Wednesday, and another storm on Thursday. And we're very concerned about the saturation that's already happened from Friday and today in this area. So I urge everybody to please assess your personal situation. You cannot escape mud flow. You cannot fight it. You need to be very careful and think this through. So I, please, think this through and take care of your family. So that concludes my report, unless the council would like any other information.
Yes, thanks, Riva. Before we finish up with that, is there a website? I've noticed, I've found a few of them. If you could just mention that website that has those really terrific maps by the county.
So both the city and the county have developed debris flood maps. The maps for the city are available on malabucity.org/woolsey, and there is a link on the left where you can click on the debris flow maps, and you can zoom in and look at your particular neighborhood to see what we've identified as terms of where the debris flow might come. One of the things to be aware of is that where it shows the potential for debris flow, those situations become extra hazardous as we get more and more rain, because the debris flow basins are filling up. So last night, we identified several areas in the Malibu West area, because those debris basins had already filled up, and that was 24 hours ago. So we need to be careful and be cautious.
Thank you for the update. Okay. Very fresh, thanks. I guess we'll start, would Rick or Skylar like to start with council comments?
Sure. I'll start. Let's see, a few things. I noticed that there was a indictment in the Tristan Bowdette murder investigation, so we'll see how that goes, but I wanted to congratulate our law enforcement once again for being diligent about an episode in our recent past that put everyone on edge, a very tragic episode and event and all the other ones. And I'm hoping that this will be the end of that, and I'd just like to congratulate them for all the hard work. One of our longtime residents, Millie Decker, passed away recently. Decker family is part of the unique history that makes up our town, and she was the senior member at this point in time. And there was another tragic story about Debbie Perucker, who passed away recently. Perucker family is longtime members of Malibu and salt of the earth. Her son was a fellow Marine, and I'd like to ask that tonight's council meeting be closed in memory of Debbie Perucker. If anybody didn't read it, the LA Times story on Sunday edition about the fire by Jaclyn Cosgrove was excellent, and I would encourage you all to read it, because she does a great job of painting the story of the initial phases of the fire, where the hillfire started one hour before the Woolsey Fire. And it gives you an idea of the difficult decision-making that goes on at the higher levels of the Fire Department Command, and it's very illuminating. I spoke to her and did another interview about our own after-action process, and told her that she did a great job. So if you, if you still can get ahold of that, I would encourage anybody to read it. Very good article. I went down and spoke to the new class of CERT recruits. I was heartened to see that 50 people signed up. I don't know if they all showed up, but there were a lot of them there, despite the fact that it was raining. And I impressed upon them the commitment of the city council and the city and the public safety agencies to develop a, what I describe as a world-class CERT organization from this point forward. And there will be more classes in the future, and I would encourage anybody else who is interested in being a part of the solution for the future connective tissue between the city of Malibu and the, what I would describe as individual neighborhood readiness groups going forward to sign up for the CERT class. And it's a great program, and it will be getting better and better and better with time. We had an administration and finance meeting this afternoon, and we passed a couple items, Skylar and I. Richard Lawrence made some comments earlier this evening. What he's referring to is the Malibu Township Council did a Records Request Act for any correspondence between myself and the city manager and other council members during the, essentially, the month of the fire. And I would, thank you very much for your comments about how hard we work, which I appreciate that. We are up at all hours of the night doing things. But I would just point out to you that what you have there is like, almost a ghost indication of what really goes on. I mean, we had texts and emails, and that was probably less than 10% of the teamwork and coordination, most of it which goes on as voice communication whenever possible. So although that paints part of the picture, it's a minor, it's a very small part of the picture. And there was a lot more that went on, but thank you for your comments. Frontier, comment about Frontier. My fire station up on Decker Canyon still, to this day, doesn't have any phone lines up there, and a lot of those areas up there still don't have phone lines. So thank you for your comments about that. And she actually helped me to get them to back off on my bill up there at the fire station, because we've been out since the ninth. So I would take the city manager up on her help for, if you have any problems with Frontier, because if you tried to do it yourself, you can be on hold for an awful long time. So, that's it.
Thank you, Rick. Skylar, would you like to go for it?
Yeah, thank you. Rick and I did have an A&amp;F meeting earlier this evening, and I just, I don't want to bog down with a bunch of things this evening, but with the warnings that come out tomorrow, please respect them. Please have a plan. And if you are in an area where there's a debris basin, or you're at the bottom of one of these canyons or creeks that are mentioned and evacuated, please do not stay in your home. Do not let what happened up the coast happen here. It's serious and it's real. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Mike, would you like to go?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers that stood up and spoke tonight. I really appreciate it, appreciate the input, some really great stuff there. JD, if you're still here, thank you very much. I don't see JD, he's hard to miss, too. But that's a compelling story, and we have traded some emails, and still want to get together with you, even though you're not here. So, and a lot of people spoke on temporary power poles. I hear you loud and clear. It's definitely, getting power back is a big issue for a lot of people. I want to acknowledge that. It's been a subject of a lot of conversation. And thank you for commenting on that, Craig, and I hope we can resolve this for, just to get everything moving, because I feel people's pain on it, and I'm sure you do, too. Since our last meeting, I've attended a number of recovery events, with the meeting by CalRecycle folks being, in my opinion, the best one yet. They did a phenomenal job, and I thought those that were attended were very appreciative of the direct information. I've also honored my commitment that I made previously, and I've answered every email, text, and phone call I've received, all with the goal of understanding what people are thinking, feeling, and needing and wanting from the city. No surprise that I've had long discussions involving a mix of trauma, heartbreak, frustration, anger, tragedy, but also hope, generosity, community spirit, and many great ideas and insights for the recovery and the future of Malibu. One sobering thing I noticed is that just because you lost your house to the fire, doesn't mean the rest of your life stops, and it's noticeable that quite a few residents are dealing with multiple difficult issues all at the same time. Some of that's really heartbreaking. As to rebuilding Malibu, the main issues I'm hearing about are having your lot cleared and figuring out what will happen, which is addressed tonight. How long it will take to get a rebuild permit, addressed tonight. What we can do about fire rebuilds on lots with driveways and water flows that aren't up to the current codes, again addressed. How lots with guest houses, pools, and landscaping can get, yep, we talked about it, temporary power. And what we can do about local housing for residents that burned down, including temporary units, restricting short-term rentals in some way, or making it easier to park an RV somewhere. These seem to be the main things people are contacting me about, and I want to acknowledge that. I've also spent more time learning about fire-resistant building materials and techniques, modular homes, and the kinds of landscaping we need to make our homes more fire-resistant. I will repeat what I've said before. However we rebuild our homes, I urge people to take a serious look at homes that can defend themselves better than your home that burned down. This is our new norm, and we need to respond to it, in my opinion. And I want to share what I consider to be very good news. You heard Brent talk earlier from the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation, and they're going to do a thorough review, as he said, of the Woolsey Fire. He is the chairman and CEO, and he's been involved in disaster events and recovery for over 40 years. And I want to read just quickly from some of the material he's sent to me. The Woolsey Fire study is an academic study designed to gain further understanding of actions taken in early warning, communication, evacuation, response, event management, and repopulation and recovery. The first phase of our study is called Stay and Defend, whereby we are interviewing individuals with firsthand experience in defending their homes, business, or neighborhood. Our study has been carefully designed to be fully transparent, independent, and non-bias. Our study team includes PhDs, MDs, and highly experienced specialists in crisis management from Cal State Long Beach, UCLA, USC, Cal Poly, UC Berkeley, and then a bunch of other acronyms, too. Our first report on Stay and Defend is targeted to be completed within 90 days of our finishing our interviews. The full report will take six to eight months to complete. The report will include our observations, findings, issues, considerations, and recommendations for action. Our study is funded by the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), as he said, along with a rapid-response study grant from the University of Colorado Natural Hazard Center. Throughout the study, we'll never ask participants being interviewed for funding support nor will we solicit any business product or service. All personal information is considered confidential. I just want to bring this up, because there is a very strong call in the town for an independent look at it, and I feel very honored that we have this group here and that they're going to take a look at what we went through. going to take a look at what we went through. We could use all the help we can get, and I've read Brent's bio. It's unbelievable. He's, he's been involved in disaster recovery and events in countries all over the world for decades. So I just want to say how fortunate I feel that this town is that they're doing this study and uh that he interviewed me earlier today. And uh, thank you very much to you and your team. Yes, and I have a whole series of different flyers and other things like that. And if you were involved in Stay and Defend, I think it'd be great if you're up to a, to, to be interviewed by them. So thank you very much. Lastly, I've been exchanging email with a man I met during my campaign, and he sent me something that really resonated with me. He told me about a speech the head of the Center for Disease Control gave after they were caught completely off-guard years ago by the anthrax scare. The speech was centered around the phrase, "Never again." I've lived through a lot of fires and other disasters in Malibu, and the same thing happens each time and will happen again this time. A year from now, I'll be more concerned with more ball fields for the kids and other community amenities, and the fire will start to fade for many. But never again can we get our butts kicked like we did this time. We have a sizable list of things to improve, and it's gonna take time. We are not going to fix our town from this event overnight. So in the following months and next year, when I'm still bringing items forward to improve our disaster readiness, our building, building codes, our communication, our landscaping rules, and more, please remember that I am committed to never again and having our city end up where we are now. And to help our council and city staff will join me in this, knowing that it will take commitment, and it won't be easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Very thorough. And Karen.
Okay, thank you. Um, as Rick did, I too would like to acknowledge the fourth victim of the Woolsey Fire, Debbie Perucker. She was a longtime resident of Point Dume. She was a mother of four children. Uh, she was my co-first vice president at Point Dume Marine Science Elementary School in nineteen ninety-eight, and I too will miss her. Debbie died of smoke inhalation rela- related to the fire. She died five weeks after the fire. So everybody needs to keep in mind, we have people who are more vulnerable. And sadly, in all of those circumstances, Debbie and her family lost their home. Her in-laws also lost their home on the same property. And um, as Rick did, I too would like to suggest that we close the meeting in Debbie's memory. Um, we also lost Millie Decker recently. Millie Decker lived in Malibu for ninety-three of her ninety-eight years, and she was an institution. I've had numerous communications in all forms with members of the public regarding a lot of issues, most of them related to the fire, response, recovery, and moving forward. I want to thank everybody who's done that. Um, as Mikey did, I've tried to answer every single one. If I missed anybody, I will circle back to you soon, I promise. Um, there've been a lot of great suggestions, so I'm the new person here. I haven't learned yet that it's difficult to get things implemented. I would like to see them happen, uh, many of them. Uh, also, as Rick said, the January sixth uh Sunday front page article in the LA Times regarding the fire, if you haven't seen it, please look it up. It's long, it's extremely informative. Um, and I highly recommend that you read it. Uh, and the writer's name is, I think, Jacqueline Cosgrove. Um, so what I've been up to uh since the last council meeting, on December twentieth, I attended the School District Superintendent's Committee regarding the reopening of the Malibu schools. There were a lot of concerns about uh air quality, uh, safety issues. Um, I personally, from what I've seen, the school district has bent over backward to keep uh students and staff safe, and I want to acknowledge them for that. Um, that meeting was held in the Webster School Library. It was open to the public, and there were probably about twenty-five people there. Uh, on January fourth, I attended uh Arnold York's Business Roundtable Monthly Meeting. It was primarily around discussions uh related to response, recovery, and rebuild, and most of you know the Yorks are heading up Operation Recovery, which some of you in the room are involved in. On January fifth, I attended the FEMA meeting that was here in the multipurpose room. It was a very well-staffed meeting by county and city. Uh, the room was filled, packed with people seeking information. I, I seemed to uh see that they got it. After the introductions were made by various departments from county and FEMA, people were able to meet one-on-one with representatives and go over their specific needs uh on their rebuilds. On Sunday, January sixth, I was very honored to participate in a group who welcomed the mayor of San Juan, Puerto Rico. Her name is Eulene Cruz. You probably had seen her on TV uh following Hurricane Maria. Uh, she's very well-spoken. Um, she came here to tour our uh disaster areas, and I became part of that entourage, um, as was Jefferson. Uh, they started in the um Seminole Springs camp, which lost a huge number of the residences there. Uh, and then the entourage uh continued through Malibu Park. We toured all of that area. Uh, we held a press conference, interestingly enough, in the middle of Pacific Coast Highway because it was closed uh due to mudslides and rock, and there was a space for us, and we had our press conference there. We moved on to uh the Trancais Center. We would have had our luncheon uh at the Chumash uh Wish Toyo Village. That was inaccessible due to road closure. Um, so I would like to thank the members of the uh Wish Toyo Village for providing that luncheon for us and for their hospitality. Uh, I went straight from that at Trancais to the Burbank Airport and flew up to Sacramento uh last Sunday for the California Contract Cities Legislative Tour. And for anybody who doesn't know, Contract Cities is a really valuable organization. Seventy-six cities in California, representing almost eight million constituents. So when they go to Sacramento, they get attention. The primary objective of Contract Cities is increased local control, and that's what everybody I know wants. It's what I want. So it's an organization that I consider worth my time to participate in. Um, as soon as I landed, we had an invitation to address the crowd at a benefit concert called California Rises for wildfire victims. It was at the Golden One Center in Sacramento. The purpose of that was to bring together people impacted by the fires with the state's leaders in a celebration of hope, healing, and renewal. And among the performers, I didn't really see the concert. I was off in a side room, and I got there halfway through it anyway um from my flight. It was Pitbull, Common. Um, a group, I did see part of a song called X Ambassadors, so that was interesting. I didn't see the concert, but uh I joined Henry Stern onstage with other elected official, officials to address the crowd and thank them for their participation and for helping Malibu among the other cities. Uh, some of the people onstage with us were Assemblymember Monique Limone and State Senator Hannah Beth Jackson. They both represent the Ventura and Santa Barbara areas. Uh, and then Monday with Contract Cities, we went to an introductory breakfast, about fifty people, and we all went over to the state Capitol with a, for a meeting with State Senator Scott Weiner for a discussion on his housing proposal regarding housing, uh densi- affordable housing density, and proximity to public transportation. Contract Cities, for the most part, is not happy with his proposal because a one-size-fits-all just doesn't work. Um, I'm not, I can't picture how it would work in Malibu either. Um, I can say in parentheses, I attended the inauguration of Governor Gavin Newsom. Uh, I did get to sit in a tent and watch it on a widescreen TV. So even though I didn't witness it in person, I did get to do something that I found interesting. Um, that afternoon, I visited the headquarters of Cal OES, Office of Emergency Systems, which is just outside of Sacramento, uh, met with two people there for an hour. That is a massive operation, to say the least. Um, I imagined it looks like what the Pentagon looks like inside, um, all kinds of equipment. Um, so the needs of Malibu were clearly laid out. Infrastructure improvements uh for communications, power backup, water availability, and a lot of the things that Susan Duñez addressed in her presentation tonight. Uh, the second day of Contract Cities Legislative Tour. After another breakfast, we went back to the Capitol. There was a break in the schedule, and I was able to meet with Assemblymember Richard Bloom and his staff and discuss issues mostly related to the Woolsey Fire response and recovery. Uh, we also enlightened him on some issues uh with school district separation, which I was surprised to find out that the former mayor of Santa Monica wasn't as familiar as I thought he might be with some of those issues. So that was a great opportunity to be able to do that with him. Uh, we met with a staff member from Assemblymember Jose Medina's office, introduced ourselves as Contract Cities and what it does, um, and remind them of the uh voting power it wields with eight million constituents. And the final meeting I went to was with Henry Stern and his staff to discuss fire response and recovery and planning for the future. Again, primarily infrastructure improvements. Um, it was busy, it was productive, and um I appreciate that opportunity to advocate for Malibu. Um, and I just wanted to say, as Riva had said, I saw on Instagram this morning the fact that the very first debris removal has started at home in Malibu West, and although that is an opt-out, I was very, very happy to see it. It's demonstrable progress, and that's what we need. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I attended an executive Woolsey Fire recovery meeting, and then followed by this meeting here that Karen was at with me. It was very productive. The room was full, and a lot of information was garnered. I felt, felt it was very valuable. We need to stay up on these things. This information's available on the city's website as well. Equally, I uh attended another city event here on the uh art opening of Doug Rucker with Mike Pearson, and uh we had to have a great time, actually, it was had by all. Uh, it was right here at City Hall. The art is still around. Uh, just to give you a quick, uh, of what Doug is about, he's an architect and an artist, and he has about fifty homes here that he designed and engineered and built here in Malibu. So, what a great resource and an old friend. We shared Waterman stories from the fifties and the sixties. So that's all I have, other than the Meet the Mayor. Um, I guess, uh, at this point, I would say the Meet the Mayor, which is a more um relaxed way to meet with myself and Riva about issues that you may have, was not such a decorum. I think we'll have to see how it goes on Thursday, depending on the rain issues, and kind of call it by uh, by ear there. I just don't know how we're going to be set up for rain, but the series will continue. Do you have an update on that?
Correct, Mayor. I think let's play it by ear and see how we're doing on Thursday. Um, and I'd like to also just add one other thing to my report that um at this time, um, Malibu Middle School, Malibu High School will remain open tomorrow, um, and that parents should uh, if there's going to be a change in that, parents will be contacted directly by the school. But at this time, um, the school is not uh under evacuation.
Thank you. Um, now on to three consent calendar. And have any items been pulled on the consent calendar? No items have been pulled. I'll look to my fellow council members to get a favorable eye from everybody on the consent calendar.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We need a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
One second.
Thank you. Now we go. Aye.
Aye.
Now we're on to four. So we'll start with four A. And we do have a number of comments on four A.
Excuse me, though, before you start, I have to recuse myself on this item, so.
I'll let Mike go through the details of his recusal.
I'll be watching from outside if it's on.
Just, just for the record, um, the council member doesn't have any financial interest in the project. It's just that he served on the planning commission at the time it was decided, so he can't hear an appeal of his own decision.
Thank you, Christie. And I know the council member's got the updated profile on four A, as I got mine. And uh, I know Skylar put his in, and I'm sure Rick did, and Karen has her new. So we are fresh here on four A. First speaker, Don Schmitz. Okay, the staff report is up first.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, and members of the city council. What you have before you this evening is an appeal of a project that was approved by the planning commission to do some improvements to Point Dume Headlands Park, as well as install a new staircase to replace the existing staircase. This is a vicinity map and aerial photograph of the park. Parks highlighted in red. The project proposes to create a temporary access and staging area to be used during construction. That area will be restored upon completion of construction. The existing staircase that is steel will be removed, and a new timber and concrete staircase will be proposed in a slightly different location. I'll show you that as part of the presentation. Some of the trails that have creeped up over time have been done. Uh, those have been created without uh consent of the state park system. So those, they call those volunteer trails. They will be removed, and the existing trails will be rehabilitated and improved. And in, in addition, there will be some ADA upgrades to the trails, as well as two elevated overlooks. These overlooks are elevated in the sense of a couple feet, but they are platforms uh to allow views of the coast up and down. To achieve some of the slopes necessary for the trails to be ADA compliant, there'll be some very small retaining walls, one to two feet in height. There'll be new rail cable fencing that will be installed in certain areas of the ADA trails, and that's to encourage folks to stay on the trail and not venture off the trail to impact uh the native plant species in the park. And part of the off-site work that's proposed of this uh project is to reconstruct two of the ADA parking spaces. Those parking spaces are actually located on city property, and the applicant will be getting right away in encroachment permits from the city's Public Works Department to do that. Per the last meeting at the planning commission, there was a request for improved signage at the park, uh, and that signage will be installed, both temporary signage during construction, as well as permanent informational signage on the park indicating hours and operations of the park to improve uh its operations and connection with the public and the neighborhood there. The project also includes a variance for construction on steep slopes. The only thing that will be located on steep slopes is the public access staircase, and pursuant to the city's local coastal program, vertical beach access on a bluff on steep slopes is a permitted use. In this plan, you can see the staging area. It will provide access from Cliffside Drive to near the edge of the bluff for the crane that will be used for the construction, for lowering materials up and down the cliff there, as well as what you can see, there's a path for the removal of the existing stairs. Those stairs are expected to be lifted out with that same crane. And staff has included the crane as part of the project, so there are no surprises to the residents when they see something that has the possibility of reaching a hundred feet in height. On this trail and overlook plan, the areas in yellow are the trails that will be reconstructed. The solid lines are trails that are going to offer ADA access and slopes that are compliant with that access requirement. The two areas indicated by the red arrows, those will be the new public overlooks, and the blue arrows indicate some of the small retaining walls that are proposed so that they could achieve the ADA access. The items that are appealed are as follows. The appellant suggested that an EIR should have been required as part of this project and not an initial study. The concerns raised by the appellant were actually already included as part of the public correspondence and comment that was evaluated during the adoption of the initial study. As part of the appeal, no new information was brought forward to refute the points raised in the initial study. There was a question of, of regarding the project's consistency with the city's LCP. Staff looked at that again. Uh, the concern regarding that the variance was not appropriate. Uh, staff disagrees with that based on the fact that vertical access stairways are permitted uses within uh bluff top areas provided that they allow for public access to the shoreline, and that is what this project proposes. There was some concerns regarding parking, that parking should have been required. The LCP does require parking for new development. This project meets a This project meets the definition of replacement construction. It was evaluated for parking as part of the initial study, and the initial study believed and determined that the project, since it was a replacement project, was not likely to impact the parking that is already provided along Cliffside Drive. It falls within that. There was question on whether or not the project was allowed to take place in a state nature preserve. As part of the initial study, there was materials included that demonstrate that the state applied for the proper permits and right-of-entry to place heavy equipment within the park during this time for construction. So that has been evaluated. It was, as I mentioned, part of the initial study that was completed prior to the coastal development permit and was adopted as part of the coastal development permit. There were some concerns that the project would be inconsistent with the city's floodplain ordinance. The project was reviewed by the Public Works Department, and since the project does not propose any habitable structures, only pilings and a staircase to the shoreline, which those are permitted because they are not habitable, so the project is consistent with the city's floodplain ordinance. These are some photographs of the site. On the lower picture there is a view of the current staircase. The new staircase will be located on the bluff face that you see in the upper photograph, so it'll be located closer to Santa Monica rather than the Oxnard side of Point Doom. And these are the overlook areas currently. These will be replaced with a platform, and the fencing will be fixed, as well as the escha. That was brought up in the appeal, that the project should have required mitigation. However, the damage to the escha that took place over time was not part of the act of the state park system. It was folks venturing off-trail. And as part of the adopted initial study and as conditioned already as part of the project, the project is going to include mitigation. And the applicant has taken seed samples from the park so that upon completion of the project, it will be revegetated with seeds from the park. Staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution denying the appeal and approving the coastal development permit. I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have three speakers. Now we have Don Schmitz, followed by Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Craig Hill, who has an extra minute. Thank you, good evening, Don.
Mayor Wagner, before you start the clock, point of order. As the appellant...
Yes, you can reserve your time.
Thank you, sir.
You know the routine, and I think everybody here does.
Yes, and before you start the clock, also, I just want to take a personal second to also acknowledge Debbie. We served for years on the Trails Commission together. I was shocked to learn about this. And she was a heck of a lady, a very frazzled, tired mom that always volunteered her time and showed up at those lengthy meetings. And I'm going to miss her. Just like I'm going to miss the clicker here for the PowerPoint. So I'm going to try and get through this in 10 minutes' time, if you'll put that in there. Don Schmitz, on behalf of Friends of Point Doom, we are not here to stop this project. This is a good project, but it is not complete. It is not ready yet to be approved. We are requesting the installation of parking controls on the existing parking lot in regards to vehicular gate and alligator teeth. I think you're aware of the parking issues. There are no parking signs up and down the streets. There's parking lot in the designated parking lot area, as you see highlighted here. We disagree with staff's assessment that this is not an expanded project, therefore it doesn't need to meet the parking requirements. LIP Section 13.4.2D specifies that any project where you remove more than 50% of the building materials needs to be treated as a new project. And that includes any structure, and therefore it needs to be parked. It needs to be appropriately parked. The staff report goes on to say that it's not new development, and therefore it's not an expansion, and it does not need to be assessed for parking. And again, we just disagree. It's like somebody tearing down a house and not being required to have the appropriate parking under the LCP, or tearing down a commercial project that was substandard in regards to its parking and not being required to be parked. This is a new project. The parking does need to be addressed by the city for its coastal development permit. 3.1, 4.1 Parking Regulations, the LIP specifies that we're supposed to have adequate parking for any new project, and that adequate parking should be provided to serve coastal access and recreation uses to the extents which are feasible, adequate off-street or on-street parking. The LIP provisions reference make it clear that public access projects in this is a new project have to have adequate parking. That's what's in our LCP. So the development standards in our LIP specify that required parking facilities shall be located on the same structure they're intended to serve, but if that can't happen pursuant to a legal agreement, that parking can be off-site. And this is a quintessential example where you would expect to see that. And yes, we do have a legal agreement. We have a settlement agreement from the very tough negotiations that the city had, both with State Parks and with California Coastal Commission, to allow the parking off-site on Cliffside Drive to serve this vertical accessway, this trails, this preserve, this recreation area. And in that settlement agreement, it specifies the city may prohibit parking in these parking spaces between sunset and sunrise daily. That's right there in the settlement agreement with the California Coastal Commission. And the signs reflect that to our parking, and the parking lot is closed ostensibly from sunrise to sunset. Excuse me, from sunset to sunrise. Freudian slip there. But it's not working, council members. We have an ongoing enormous problem with folks coming in after sunset, partying in the parking lot, and creating a significant disturbance for the neighborhood. And I don't think that this is any secret, it's been very well documented. So the City Council must make the findings to approve this project. The project is safe, and it's consistent with the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. In the mitigated negative declaration adopted by State Parks, they went on to state that the Point Doom State Beach is officially open from sunrise to sunset, and that that vertical accessway would be closed at nighttime. People aren't supposed to be on it, and there's a good reason why. We have very sheer cliffs, and it doesn't take a huge leap of imagination to think about people going tumbling off the cliffs down to the bottom. It's supposed to be closed at night, but State Parks is not going to have a gate on that vertical accessway, and there's not adequate enforcement of the parking lot at nighttime. The LIP and the Coastal Act goes on to specify that projects that maximize access and have parking are supposed to be designed in such a fashion that protects the private property rights of people that are within the neighborhood. That's the law, that's what we are supposed to be implementing. That's why we have the parking restrictions, because it would be inappropriate to have the nighttime parking in this quiet neighborhood. Now, when we raised these objections and brought this to the attention of the city, the city planning staff actually scheduled this matter to be in front of the Planning Commission to issue a coastal development permit and wrote the report. It got tabled because the city attorney said this needs to come to the City Council because this parking issue involves city land, and so it has to be a council action. But they wrote the staff report, I'm going to show you some of the findings. And it goes on, in those findings, which were not adopted, they were not brought forward to the Planning Commission, that this is a very quiet neighborhood, and it's a problem to have overnight parking in what's been going on down in there. But there's a solution, it's a very, very simple solution. Let's put a gate. Let's put a gate on the parking lot that's closed at sunset and opened up at sunrise. And on the other end, let's put in the alligator teeth so that we don't have to worry about closing the gate at sunset and people getting trapped, they just drive out. And there's an enormous amount of precedent for this. But in that staff report that was written, the staff wrote the findings that the vehicular gates and alligator teeth will serve as a more efficient enforcement tool to deter vehicles from parking there between sunset and sunrise during the nighttime periods. And they went on to specify that the traffic noise and environmental impacts associated with nighttime use of the parking adversely affect the preserve and the surrounding neighborhood. It is an ongoing problem, and the city's professional planning staff recognizes this. Enhancing enforcement of the allowed parking hours will help ensure that the preserve is used during the intended daylight hours and that the habitat and visitor safety are protected. State Parks has indicated it has no objection to this project. Craig Sapp stood here at this podium and said he did not have an objection to this, but it was on city property. I do note that the modifications to the handicap parking are also on city property. But we're in the right venue now. We're here in a city council chambers, it's a city street. You can, in fact, condition the project to put on the gates and put the gator teeth on there. You can condition this project to do just that. The findings that were written go on to say that the objectives are to enhance safety and mitigate against nighttime traffic noise, and that this proposal will comply with all applicable regulations of the state and local law, and that the gate and the gator teeth will not result in potentially significant adverse impacts to the physical environment or scenic resources, and is the least environmentally damaging alternative. The simple gate, the simple gator teeth are not going to hurt the environment, they're not going to decrease access. They're simply going to ensure that the parking lot is utilized as it was designed to be open during daylight hours. There's an enormous amount of precedence for this. This is a parking lot for beach access, Pacific Coast Highway and Coastline Drive. You've probably driven past it a million times, I have. You can see it's got gates to get into it, and it has the gator teeth, which you can't see real well, located right there, to drive out of the parking lot. Westward Beach Parking Lot. Who's been there, maybe a million times. Located directly below the preserve that is the topic of discussion this evening. You have the gate to get in, and you have the gator teeth to get out. It's just standard operating procedure for this type of parking lot to serve coastal access. Right around the corner, Zuma Beach. Gates to get in and gator teeth to get out. What we are asking for as a neighborhood is not an extraordinary consideration. It is a very simple, low-cost, efficient way to make sure that that parking lot functions the way it's supposed to function. There's a very large number of support letters in regards to our position from the neighbors who have documented to this council and to your professional staff that this is an ongoing and significant problem within their neighborhood. So here's our request. We are requesting the City Council to place a special condition on this coastal development permit. We want this project to move forward. We will remove our objections should we get some reasonable parking controls on the parking lot. We're requesting the City Council to adopt findings of consistency with the LCP that should you add the gate and the gator teeth to the project, that it is consistent with the local coastal program, and that the access in the parking lot, the access improvements in the parking lot will now be in compliance with our LCP, which specifies it's supposed to be safe, not open at nighttime, and respectful of the private property in the area and the neighborhood. And lastly, and what ought to make it exceedingly simple, is that the Friends of Point Doom have offered, and are offering again tonight, that they will pay for the construction of the access gate and the gator teeth. But it has to move forward now, this needs to be a component of the project. Should this council see the wisdom of doing that tonight and condition the project accordingly, then the neighborhood will pay for those parking controls so the parking lot is not open during the nighttime hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Additionally speaking on 4A, Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Craig Hill.
Hello, council members. I'm here to talk about firsthand experience. I live directly across the street from this parking lot. Every night I come home, there are people parked in the parking lot. The way that the sound echoes in that area, people can be in the parking lot, and I can hear every single conversation at my house that is at least 75 to 100 feet away. Additionally, just so everybody knows, when you're on Point Doom on the trails, I can hear everything you're saying, perfectly clear as if you're in my yard. Just keep that in mind. I just want to reiterate what Don has said. Every other public parking lot that exists within the city of Malibu for the beaches, whether it be state parks, whether it be county-run parks, there are gates that close those parking lots down at dusk or at dark. And this is the only one that's, well, I shouldn't say that. There are state, the El Pescador, El Matador, La Piedra. Those are immediately adjacent to homeowners also. They get the benefit of being able to at least have some quiet residential time, even though they're directly next to a state park or some other public facility. That's all we're asking for here. It's the same consideration that many other people in Malibu also get as they share these public areas with the private residential areas. I just encourage you to please allow this to go through. There are improvements that are happening on the ADA spaces. I don't understand why the city isn't also including these abilities to close the gates and close off the parking lot at nighttime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Craig, and you've got an extra minute. And your extra minute is from Hashi Clark. Are you here? There you are, you got it, Craig. How about it? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Attorney Hogan, Riva, staff. I don't want to derail this project either, but I noticed some concerns that haven't been addressed, and I thought they should go on the record, and maybe there's still something you could do about it as you go forward. There's a lot of good work in the initial study, especially the biology remediation. There are a couple categories that would want a full EIR if you can't figure out a better answer to it. On the archaeology, I feel a sort of moral imperative to point out what hasn't been pointed out, that this has deep spiritual significance, this site, for the Chumash. And oral accounts recorded by anthropologists such as Harrington, Krober, Heiser, Blackburn, even Chester King can tell you, I say even because he's local, documenting that in Chumash cosmology, there are a few coastal points, Point Doom and Point Conception in particular, where they believe that the souls depart for Shemilaxa, the afterlife, in the west. And that these are sort of the jumping-off points of the souls. So it's a sacred spot. Now, the report says it checked the Sacred Land Files database and didn't find anything. But that should be sort of a starting point and not dispositive. And a sort of analogy, I felt like that's sort of like checking a guide to Malibu City Parks and not seeing that it's a world-class surfing location. Well, you know, you can't put everything in every record. And sure, there's been a lot of grading on top of the point that would have obliterated a lot of that evidence. But we're looking at the side of the Bluff Edge now, and even the existing stairs likely didn't examine this closely because they were built in the early '70s before the Coastal Act requirements to be doing this intensive archaeological stuff. And even with all that, the initial study acknowledges that it is a prehistoric campsite, which would comport with it being a sacred site, and that they found 453 archaeological resources in 54 hand-dug test holes. That's over eight items per hole. So, and then there's a report that human remains were found on the adjacent house site. So there's sort of a presumption that there will be archaeological findings. And I don't know that the exact mechanism embodied in the Insequa will be sufficient for that. Plus, I sort of wonder why the archaeological testing report is confidential. I don't know why that would be, I'd just like to know the answer to that. And while I'm here, I think the parking is inadequate. It's currently inadequate, and I disagree that this new stuff, new decks, new retaining walls, doesn't trigger that requirement for adequate parking. It does. And so I think you're going to have increased parking problems. And this just sort of feeds into an ongoing situation in the city where we have that pocket park between Los Flores and Big Rock recently approved for the state. No talking about the parking. We have parking issues at Nobu and Soho House, Soho House and Malibu Beach Inn. And so it's sort of an ongoing thing that we're not really addressing parking seriously enough. And then finally, long-term impacts. Consider the concrete and steel and what they're going to do in three or four decades when we have an inch or two of erosion on the coast every year. That thing's going to be hanging out there and maybe tumbling, and we have to be thinking about the environmental impact of the end of life of this project. And how are we going to be cleaning all that up off the beach, you know, 40 years from now? Or the environmental impact of having to repair that and go in later? And none of that's been discussed. So, nor have there really been any discussion of cumulative impacts and how that would work out. So there's some just big question marks in the report. I think it should go ahead, but some of these things need to be answered before they really break ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Suzanne, are you going to... Suzanne, are you going to be here for answers and questions and that kind of thing as we debate it among ourselves? Thank you, Suzanne. I guess I'll start with my, oh, did...
You have five minutes.
Oh, I think it's for, this is rebuttal now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here you go, Don.
Again, Don Schmitz on behalf of the Friends of Point Doom. I just want to point out how apropos it is that the State Parks biologist has a cricket for a ringtone on her phone. The, this is really actually very simple. It does not need to be overly complicated. This is, this is a low-level solution that can take care of a big ongoing problem. I want to reaffirm that our LIP specifies that unless destroyed by natural disaster, which this project is not, the replacement of fifty percent or more of any structure is not repair and maintenance, but instead constitutes a replacement structure requiring a coastal development permit. We've processed a coastal development permit and our LCP goes on to specify that any new project must comport with all the applicable policies of the LCP. And the LCP specifies that projects need to be adequately parked. The staff report says, well, we don't have parking standards for things like parks. Okay, but that doesn't mean that we ignore the parking needs for a proposed recreational area. A very good recreational area, a very good preserve, something that the neighborhood wants and the community wants and the state wants. And we definitely want to see this go forward. We do have no parking signs. You're not supposed to be parking there at nighttime. That was part of the settlement agreement from 2000. It was part of the agreement that we signed also with State Parks in the city of Malibu. It was established because it's inappropriate. I've handed out to you, by the way, findings that were written for that staff report that was not brought forward to the Planning Commission that shows that the gate and the gator teeth would be consistent with the policies of the LCP. Your staff has already analyzed it. We have a demonstrated problem in that neighborhood which shows that as things are going right now, the parking lot is not consistent with the Coastal Act, it's not consistent with the local coastal program, in that the parking is not managed and designed in such a fashion that it respects the neighborhood and the surrounding property owners as well as serving the general public. And that's the test of what we're supposed to do. So again, a simple solution is in front of you. Place a condition on this project for the gate and for the gator teeth. It's going to be opened up at sunrise, it's going to be closed at sunset. There's a lot of different ways we could do that. We could have it automatically done with photovoltaic sensors. The State Parks Rangers could open and close it, perhaps the county could do it, perhaps we could. And we are expending a lot of resources as a city, constantly sending the Sheriff's Department out there, ticketing and haranguing people which are out there partying in the parking lot and creating a big disturbance for the neighborhood. I think overall, government's going to manifest a real cost savings by instituting this gate and these gator teeth and closing it at nighttime. And the fact that the neighborhood, the Friends of Point Doom have offered to pay for the gate, have offered to pay for the gator teeth so that it can be installed as a part of this project ought to put the whole thing to rest. It's not going to cost the taxpayers anything. It's not going to cost State Parks, it's not going to cost the city of Malibu. So why don't we go ahead and institute a common sense solution which is being applied on these different coastal access parking lots, literally in all three directions from the subject preserve which is in front of you tonight? We want to, we want to stop our objection to this. This is the opportunity whereupon we can do that. So our plea to this council is again, please add a special condition for the incorporation of the gate and the gator teeth on the parking lot so the parking lot is managed consistent with the parking signs that we have out there now and we've had since it was constructed pursuant to the settlement agreement in 2000. I thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Don. Now we're up to council, I'd like to announce my ex parte. I had a brief meeting with Don Schmitz, I believe between five and ten minutes, discussing the topic. And I also had a meeting with Craig Sap, a brief meeting with Craig at the Malibu Pier Parking Lot. Any other ex parte?
Yeah, I met with Don Schmitz and talked about it here at City Hall.
I spoke with Don about it on the phone and I also talked with Craig about this project a long time ago, but that was probably a couple years ago.
I did receive a request for an ex parte meeting, which I did not take, and I did welcome the person who contacted me to send me written information, which they did.
And that information was distributed to all the council members?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, does anybody want to take a whack at this first, starting left or right or right to left?
I tell you what, I want to hear from the, I'm super sensitive to impact of the public visiting neighborhoods. I think it's, it's one of those responsibilities of the city council to preserve the rural tranquility of our wonderful neighborhoods while still hosting all the wonderful visitors who want to come and visit our beautiful spots. And this actually, the fact that there is a park here is pretty cool. It's very cool. I mean, you look at that map of Point Doom and the whole thing is like residential lots. Boom, right there at the tip, very distinct promontory on the coast of California from which you can see both sunrise and sunset over the Pacific Ocean. We have a public park, which is a phenomenally beautiful spot, no question about it. And I'm very super sensitive to the neighbors like Mary Ann living right across the street from this. It's unfair. It's unfair of us, especially if we've already required this to be a sunrise-to-sunset thing and people are, you know, with the advent of social media, they're all going to be out there whooping it up. So I hear you and, but I really want to hear from the, not only the surfers amongst us, but the Point Doom residents and hear what their comments are.
Real quick, I just want to mention that we do have Suzanne Good here from DPR and she's here to answer any technical questions you may have and she's a great resource. Moving on, Skylar, are you up?
Yeah, I just wanted, Suzanne, could you come up to the mic real quick? My question is that, do you have any objection to there being any gates that go on the parking lot there? Do you know if State Parks has a stance on that or anything? And that would just be to, you know, alleviate some of the residents' concerns about the extensive loud noise in the evening.
While State Parks has no objection to the installation of a gate, we do not think it is appropriate for the city to condition our permit on a structure that would be placed off-site on city land. That would be entirely up to the city. We have agreed to and have offered to repair and upgrade the ADA parking spaces in order to allow disabled park visitors to access the improved ADA trail. And so we've offered to do that, but we feel that conditioning our permit on the installation of this gate would not be acceptable.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the project and deny the appeal. And I would like an item to come back in the future that discusses putting a gate and the gator teeth at this location.
Is that the appropriate forum for discussing this and moving it forward?
Yes. And then if there's a second, I just want to make a quick comment.
We still have discussion because I'd like to throw in a few things. I've visited the site, I use it for a surf resource when I don't have somebody's key at Little Doom. What you discover when you visit the site is that it's well-used, well-visited, and ninety percent of the visitors are well-intentioned. They're there to take photos, experience the beach. And some of the trails that go off from the main trails, which are well-marked, are because they have lack of restroom resources in the area. If you visit the area, you'll notice most of that restroom activity occurs closest to the roadside. And that's what you're going to witness when you go up there. So nighttime is when you notice most of it taking place. It's not during the daytime when the families are out there, but it's quite often at night. And I haven't spent a night there since the early 2000s when Jim and Ann Gabel lived there, right directly across the street. Those of you who were here back then remember Jim and Ann Gabel. So the concerns are also that I've witnessed about wildlife and the wildlife that moves from the Oxnard side of Point Doom up over the bluff and then down the other side because much of the wildlife is advanced and they're not going to climb over the rocks. It's mostly coyote. So that, and foxes, just I've only witnessed the coyotes. So when we close down a park, it's also not to keep people out, but allow wildlife to participate in what it does. So just wanted to mention that, that you'll notice that if you spend some time up there in the evenings. And moving on, Karen?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I just jump in real quick? Because I just, I just wanted to take advantage of the next couple meetings for these kind of illumination points. And I'm, so I want to add to this particular, to the motion that Councilmember Peak made because we're not talking about whether or not there should be a gate there or not. I think the staff report was very clear about that. We're talking about whether or not this project should be conditioned on having a gate there. And just as a legal matter, Mr. Schmidt's argument is exactly why you can't impose the condition. The only time that you can impose a condition on a project is to mitigate the impacts that are caused by the project. And what Mr. Schmidt was talking about was that we need to take care of an ongoing problem. That there's a problem right now and this is a solution for it. We can create solutions to problems whenever we can think of them. And this one looks like it may very well be a solution to a problem, but that's something that we would take on the city on its own initiative. We can only require applicants to solve problems that they cause. And so since this project is just the replacement of rickety, dangerous staircase with an improved, sketchy, a sketchy staircase with an improved one, that is, that project doesn't create any impact into the parking. That parking problem is already there. It's not going to create the problem. And so it isn't an appropriate condition to impose. That's why the staff is recommending that it come back as CIP. And now with the offer of payment for the project, I bet that it could skip the CIP line altogether, which is the heart of Councilmember Peak's motion.
Thank you for clarification, Kristy. This was just handed to me from Riva and I'll just pass it on and it says, "All Santa Monica Malibu schools will be closed tomorrow." Oh, okay, sorry. It says S-M-U-U-S-D. All Malibu schools will be closed tomorrow. Fair enough. That's a must-be-an-official thing. It came up rank. Thank you. And Karen, you had something as well?
Yeah, I too live on Point Doom and I do enjoy visiting the headlands. I love taking friends there when they visit from other places. I love to go and watch the sunset. I fully understand Mary Ann's position about the disturbances. But I think we have two separate issues here. But I do want to say I don't like to see any regulations without enforcement. We do have signs up that say, "No parking at night." I've parked there at night, I will admit, when it was a full moon, so, but I haven't made noise, Mary Ann, I promise. In any event, I, I do see this as two separate projects. Thank you.
Rick, one more, you have more comments?
No, I want to hear what you have to say and then I have one more comment.
So, understanding how hard it is to find funding for a project like this and how difficult it is for DPR to go through this, if we move forward with it, Skylar has made a motion before we second it, I'd like to discuss not interrupting the timing of the event if that's something the council would entertain, to move this very quickly forward so the DPR doesn't have any more frustration and moves out of their time zone to do the work.
I agree with you. And also, I likewise, if we're going to bring it back to address the concerns of the neighborhood in a way that they pay for it, and if we're all in favor of that, let's bring it back right away so they don't have to wait and so we can get moving on that. If everyone has, is in agreement with that, I would say, let's bring it back immediately.
Okay, so that sounds like a second from Rick. Okay, so we're going to call for a vote, understanding that we are going to move this forward as quickly as we can and we'll determine the final facts of it to make sure DPR does not have an interruption in its funding and its timing. Let's do a vote.
So just to be clear, my motion is to deny the appeal, granting the project to move forward as planned, and separately to have an item back, let's say, within the next two months. If that's okay, Riva, if that can fit on our agenda.
We need a coastal development permit, so I'd have to go right through the Planning Commission first, right?
Go through the proper channels to get that gate and alligator teeth in place.
Additionally, you'll need, they'll need a bollard there, but when we get into details, I'll get the bollard. It's between the split rail fence and the pavement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Suzanne, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Suzanne, for coming down. Okay, we're in the sevens. Yes.
Gone by the air.
Could we, quick one?
Rick, are you up for a break at nine o'clock?
Sure.
Okay. So please bear with us, we've been here since 6:30. We will make this a very brief break, Mike, to start 7A. It's nine o'clock, we'll be here back at 9:10. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I do, thanks.
Good evening, councilpersons. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth, and we ask that you form an environmental commission, whose mission is to recommend ways to protect and enhance Malibu's fragile natural and man-made environment. Neighboring communities have such a commission. Calabasas has one, Ogora has one, but for some reason, Malibu doesn't. Such a commission has been talked about for a couple of years, but never created. An additional, any additional cost of this commission would be absolutely minimal. And since we believe you want Malibu's environment protected, such a commission could help the council by bringing forth ideas and programs to achieve this end. So please, please make such a commission a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. So just for reference, if people following at home, that would be 7A, Part Six, Recommended Actions. And Keon, you're up next. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wagner, City Council members and staff. Poor, Sin Free Malibu encourages the city to look towards establishing an environmental commission to oversee the earth finally management policy and other issues concerning the environment. Determining pest control methods which are safe for citizens, especially children who have developing neurological and immune systems, pets and environment would be one prime function of the commission. Pest control specialists are chartered to remove pests. They may or not be as familiar with alternative non-pesticide methods that are more labor-intensive or time-intensive, discouraging their use. Policies should be set by the environmental commission to get together with staff members who are familiar with the issues, experts and public. Exceptions to the policy can also be supervised and decided on a case-to-case basis by such a committee. There are many brilliant people that live here in Malibu that have relevant expertise. The commission could be composed of citizen-based volunteers who contribute their time and energy to monitor and improve the quality of life for all and resources by providing ideas and information that advocate the community's vision for Malibu. The commission represents transparency and advocates an invitation to the public to participate in forming policy. The commission would oversee environmental policy and assist in areas of air and water quality, land use, waste management, flora and fauna, resources, water and energy, and public information and events. The commission would provide assistance to the environmental department and city council by reviewing and commenting on city ordinances and state mandates and identify important environmental goals with the city's mission statement as the guide. The community has been waiting for this commission for several years. Thank you for your consideration for initiating this much-needed commission.
Thank you, Keon.
Thank you.
That could also segue into the pallets, the plant pallets for future construction. Skylar, you and I are on the advisory board for this. Do you want to take the handle, or do you want me to start? Well, I'm gonna push it through and try and hopefully get council sentiment to move forward with something like this. We have been talking about it for years. Not much has been done. We've had great amount of, a great amount of presentations from other counties like Ventura on the owls and the predator poles and things that people are implementing on their own in their homesites. And I think maybe we should start to look at this as a real commission. As was mentioned, it's not expensive. I'll look to the council.
Okay, so with this item, there's a couple of different elements to it. So that is part of number six of this item, is adding a new commission. So I would absolutely support having an environmental commission. And specifically in tasking them, I think that what we could task them with is, we have to, you know, I'm curious to hear what everybody else thinks about that. I know that there's a lot of different elements that would go into that, and some of those things may fall under other commissions that are existing. So I think we have to be very clear with what that is, or maybe just start them with a couple tasks, or say that we want you to bring things forward to the council that we see going on in other communities that are very much environmentally conscious. I don't know exactly, you know, how everybody else feels about that, but I think that it was maybe a wise thing for us to do, and many people in our community have been requesting that for a while.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else? Left or right? Okay, right to left.
Sorry. Yeah, I'd like to thank the speakers for their comments, and quite frankly, to me, it's kind of a surprise that we don't already have an environmental commission. And I think in light of the fire rebuild work that the whole community is looking at, that could be a great partner in that way. And obviously, there's overlap between aspects of the various commissions. And I think it's, to me, again, I'm surprised we don't already have it.
I think that, oh, I was just gonna add that I would, I know that we're dealing with a lot of stuff right now with the fire and whatnot, and maybe the best way to do this and to segue into this would be to start this in like the summer, or to start it at some point that's further out in the future, because I know that some of our staffing needs right now are a little bit strapped in terms of how that this commission would move forward.
Yeah, that's the comment that I was gonna say is, I ran on supporting the mission statement, of course, and we've done a lot for that. And I'm a big supporter of all of those things. However, recent events have moved to the forefront, and we've heard a lot of commentary here tonight about what the priority of the city should be in terms of expending its time and energy and manpower and all of that. And I'm, I wouldn't relegate environmental concerns to something like as a luxury, but I do think we, you know, all you gotta do is drive around the town, and you could, it looks like a war zone. I mean, there's destruction all over the place, and the cries from the citizenry are, "Help us get back to normal." So I'd kinda like to hear from the city manager how this would impact, and if Skylar's comment about putting it off to a little time in the future, you know, everything is changing. Our financial picture is changing. Everything has changed. We just had the fire of the millennium run through here, and we can't forget that. And as far as the priorities go, I hear all the people out there saying, "Help me put my life back together." So I, before we start allocating resources and time and energy and staff energy to do things that I think are, I do think are important, and I do think they're important, we're still on a kind of a wartime footing, so I'd like to hear from the city manager whether she thinks she has the resources to support this at this moment in time. I do support it, but maybe we need to delay it just a little bit.
Just before Riva takes, Mike would want, just wanted to have a couple of comments. Here you go, Mike.
Yeah, I think, I think there's obviously a lot of consensus on this, on the council. It was part of my platform. I'm not far from backing off on, this is really important to me. I did discuss this with Riva earlier, and I understand what Skylar and Rick said, it's, there's a lot going on right now. So if we're gonna go forward with this, I think probably the best way to do it is to pick a date, let's hear what Riva has to say, because I know she's under, you know, a lot to do, a lot going on, but let's pick a date that makes sense. That was a good suggestion, I thought. And, but I, it seems like a no-brainer for the city of Malibu, absolutely, to me. And that, that would be my comments.
Thank you. I know that this is a very high priority for the council and the community, and obviously, our staff has been very committed to making sure that all of the environmental priorities that the council has established have gotten done over the last few years. Given the current workload and priorities, I would say at this time, I would be very concerned about having sufficient staff resources to develop a new commission, create a work plan for the commission, and staff a commission. And so I guess what I would suggest is we develop next year's fiscal year budget, that you allow the staff to do some research on the staff resources that would be required to properly carry out a commission, and include that as part of the budget that's presented to the council this spring, so that we could implement it in the coming year. With that being said, I certainly want the council to know that if there are priorities that fall under the environmental umbrella, that they can certainly bring those forward to us to make sure that they're being implemented and carried forward, whether it's developing additional ordinances or whatever that might be. But, you know, as you know, we're right now looking to bring on additional consulting resources for the planning and permitting services. That's an item that will be coming forward to the council at the next meeting. So I'm already asking for additional funds and resources just to deal with the workload that we have right now for the rebuilding. So I, I never like to have to say no, but I'm just gonna ask if we could get a few months, would be really helpful.
Well, thank you, Riva, and for the speakers earlier this evening on this topic. It looks like you have a lot of traction now, Keon and Pat. You have five council members who wanted this to move forward. You heard about the encumbrances to this wonderful commission that is proposed. It will happen. Before I'm gone, I know that. I've got to get this one going. So give us a couple of months and watch us perform. You have, right now, you have five council members who believe in your efforts and want to establish this commission. I think you've got a lot of traction. Bear with us through this tough time right now. Thanks. And we're moving on to, we're still on 7A, and now we'll start at the top. Thank you, Keon. Thank you, Pat.
Jefferson, I don't know exactly how we wanted to go through all of these different commissions, but I had just one change on mine, so I don't know if you wanted me to get that done and then go down the line with each person, because I know that some people have to nominate some new people, so I, whatever.
Well, let's, let's get a consensus from the council and see how they feel about it, rather than just, is that good for you, Rick?
Well, why don't we just go through each commission one at a time, and you can do your placement, then we'll fill in the blanks.
Okay, does that work for you? Okay, that's how we'll go through it then. Thank you. Okay, first up, 7A1. That would be you, Mike.
I nominate Kathy Eldon for the Cultural Arts Commission. Incredibly proud and honored to have the owner of Creative Visions, who's done so many amazing things, help, help bring the city forward. Really excited about that. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Am I reading, just reading all mine?
Just, let's just go.
Okay, Parks and Rec. I don't know if I have them in the right order. Parks and Rec. I am nominating Georgia Goldfarb, and I think she's gonna be fantastic, environmentalist and very involved with Parks and Rec already, with the Monarch Project, with Pat over there. For the Planning Commission, I'm nominating Craig Hill, who's already been discussed tonight a little bit, so he's clearly very well of what's going on in planning. Thank you, Craig. We spent a lot of time talking. I really, really appreciate this very much. Public Safety Commission, I am appointing Chris Frost. We have a great working relationship for years already, and excited, we spent a lot of time talking about what's expected and what's needed, so thank you very much, Chris. Public Works Commission is, where is, he's not here, he's away. So this was somebody I campaigned against. He knows a lot about government, and I'm challenging him to rise to a new level, and that would be Lance Simmons. I think he's actually away. And for Wastewater Advisory Committee, the person that, to me, knows more about it than anyone in Malibu, Norm Haney. I'm nominating Norm. Thank you, Norm, very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. And Karen, you wanna take it from here?
Okay, for cultural arts, my nominee is Julia Holland, who's sitting next to Kathy Eldon. And I have to say, when I read her resume, as much as I knew about Julia, I was truly blown away in it, or her, not resume, but application. And it's here, part of the record, if anybody would like to look at it. Julia, thank you for making this commitment. Um, where am I? Sorry? Parks and Rec, my nominee is not here at the moment. I think he's dealing with some rain and travel-related issues on the highway. His name is Robert Wells. He is a resident of Point Dume, the father of two young sons, very active sportsman, accomplished executive, and I'm very grateful to have him agree to be my Parks and Rec Planning Commission, my appointee is Jeff Jennings, who is a longstanding member of the Planning Commission, and he will be continuing. Public Safety, my nominee as my Public Safety Commissioner is Hans Letts. And if you know anything about Hans, he's been extremely involved in public safety issues with communications and with power, and I look forward to having his input. And last, Public Works. I am very happy to have Paul Grisanti continue on the Public Works Commission. He works as hard as anybody I've ever met, and he's extremely knowledgeable, and I think that will be a value for the city to have him continue. And Wastewater Advisory Committee, Nick Barsakini has agreed to continue in that position, and he is my appointee.
Thank you, Karen. Rick, do you wanna do it, or Skylar?
I just have one change. I'm gonna be nominating Hamish Patterson to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I thank Lori for all of her time.
Parks and Rec with Hamish, okay. Thank you, Skylar and Rick.
No changes.
And I have no changes as well. How was that quick for you, Kristy?
That was very good, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. We're on 7B. And do we have any?
Mayor, mayor, just one second. Going back to 7A, did, we're then affirming the ex officio and all of the at-large appointments of the council?
I believe so, and I think we're good to go on that one.
Okay.
So all of those names that were there are still confirmed.
And Heather, just to show you know, my Public Safety Commissioner, his last name is Roberts, with an S at the end, not Robert.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good to move on, Heather?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on 7B. So we're on the Subcommittee Appointments. That's us, and what tasks we choose to move forward with on our own levels here. And first up is A&amp;F. Right now, it's Skylar and Rick.
I'll make a motion to nominate myself and Rick Mullen to A&amp;F.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there room for discussion here?
Certainly, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Sorry if I'm out of order. I would be interested in working on that committee if, if anybody has had enough of it.
I guess that's between you and Rick and Skylar, so I'll let you have that discussion.
I think at this time that, that we're, I'm, I'm fine staying on it, and I spoke about that with Rick earlier today at our A&amp;F meeting, or prior to our A&amp;F meeting. But if I see any change in the future, I would definitely consider changing that. But this time, I do not.
Thank you for your enthusiasm, and it's noted, and I'm, I'm happy right there. So, thanks.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I'm just hoping that the two current committee members have the time for, for that work.
It appears so, but I kinda jumped the gun on this. I was just handed this speaker slip on 7B, so Bruce, if you're still here, you have your three minutes, sir, and I'm sorry I overlooked you. I was, truly just was handed the slip. Thank you.
I appreciate that. By the way, for the record, I didn't say before, my name is Bruce Silverstein, and I am a resident of Malibu. And it was no, I figured you might have just been waiting till the Disaster Response and Recovery Committee came up anyway, so that's what I wanted to address. I just wanna say, with respect to that item, the mission of that committee, if it should be, should include an investigation of the city of Malibu's preparedness for the Woolsey Fire, as well as the city of Malibu's response to the fire during and after the event. I believe that most people will agree, and it remains to be seen what the, what the council will say, there should be no involvement whatsoever in any investigation of the city other than as witnesses of the city manager or any person who was on city council as of the date of the fire and in the immediate aftermath. And the same should be with respect to the city's involvement in any investigation by the county, the state, or any other authority. It makes zero sense for anyone, and by the way, I wanna say to begin with, I don't have any preconceived notion that anyone in the city did anything wrong, or did anything that anyone ought to be, at the end of the day, complaining about. There are complaints at this time, but I don't have any reason to believe, one way or the other, what that will be. But if there's going to be a conclusion, if there were a conclusion that the city did everything right, it will have no credibility whatsoever if people who are subject to that analysis were on or touched the investigation that led to that analysis. So this has to be an independent process. In the public, in the private sector, the committee member, the council members who were on council at the time wouldn't even be involved in the decision-making processes to whether to have an investigation and how to have the investigation. It would be left to a special committee of the independent members of the council. So I feel that, I feel that that's critically important if this investigation, if there's going to be one, is to have any credibility for the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
We'll be down there in just a few minutes at that point, and then we'll, we'll have that discussion. Thank you for opening it. We are on the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee. Currently, it's council member Peak and myself. If there are no ups.
I'm good with that.
I'd like to continue on that to help Keon and Pat with their efforts. Thank you. Next committee, Library Subcommittee. We've lost Laura. I'm still on it. I'm looking for some other council member to help me out.
I am interested.
I'd like to nominate Karen.
I would like to second that.
And Jefferson.
I would like to third that.
So I guess we're all in favor of that, so now it will be Karen and myself on the Library Subcommittee.
Perfect.
Thank you, Karen. We're stepping up. Parks and Rec Subcommittee, we have Rick and Skylar.
Happy to continue on that.
I'm happy.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next up, Public Safety Subcommittee. We've lost both our former council members, Lou and Laura, so we'll need two people to step up on that one.
I'd, I'd be very interested in being on that one.
I would as well.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so they're taking that one. Public Works Subcommittee, it's, once again, Skylar and myself. Anybody else interested besides myself and Skylar?
I'm happy to not do Public Works.
As a past Public Works Commissioner, I'd be glad to fill in on that one, too. God, just picking up the slack, so solid. I like Public Works.
I know.
Seeing no further conversation on that one, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we are at Zorasis, and I've been on that for six years now. I enjoy it. I'd like to stay. Is there anybody else?
I would second that.
Okay, do you wanna stay?
Yes.
If you ever get tired of it, let me know.
Any, any other discussions on Zorasis? Okay, I'll second it, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Down to the ad hoc committee, Communication, Public Relations Ad Hoc. Are we continuing with that, or did we table it, or is it still going?
I think you're down.
Are we done with that?
All right. That was quick. Ad hoc committee on, yeah, okay, that one is next up. Any comments?
The bond measure can be tabled.
Okay, we're done with that one. School district separation, Laura was on that one. She did a great job. I still think.
I'd like to add Karen.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hope she wants to do it, 'cause she never said a word.
We are very democratic here, aren't we, Karen? Okay. Now, the, the next one up is the one that was spoken by public speaker Bruce, and I'd like to discuss that one, too, and open up that for discussion with the council. Does anybody wanna start with?
Yeah, let me, let me address the comments of the speaker. It's not an investigation. It's, and it is, here's what it says, "To coordinate disaster and fire evacuation preparedness and make recommendations to city council with respect to additional emergency prepared actions." So it's an after action. It's basically to review things that happened in all the different functional areas and to make recommendations going forward. And it's not gonna be done by, at least the way I envision it, as one of the persons who's listed on it at this point, to be done actually by those two people. I think all of the, the areas where you look at where that should be examined, for example, the conduct of the evacuation, the noticing for evacuations, the performance of the water supply system, the communication infrastructure, the fire response, et cetera, should be looked at by people who are relatively expert in that area, or people who actually have experience and function in those areas. As far as the, you know, I've heard some people say, "Well, you know, we don't want Rick looking at the fire response, because he works for the fire department, and he should recuse himself." The actual investigation, and there will be an investigation, into the conduct of the fire department is gonna be conducted by the County of Los Angeles, and the city does have a seat at that table. And so the function of the city in that role, because the county has vast resources, and they are hiring an outside agency to look at every detail of the fire department, as well as the sheriff's department responded to those things, our role in that should be to gather all the input and concerns and observations from the individual citizens here in Malibu and residents, and send it up to those investigators and to get answers for that. So I think that those concerns about people that I personally would review their responsibility with the fire department are valid, totally valid, and I don't have a problem with that at all. But this is an after-action process. We look at how we did things. We look at what worked, what didn't work. What can we do to do things like, I'll give you an example of a complicated one. How do we make the communication infrastructure, the commercial communication infrastructure more durable? That's probably something that will take a little more doing, may require legislation, have to work with the community of contractors, et cetera, where something like, let's say, the noticing for the evacuations and so on and so forth could be done relatively quickly here in the city with good input from people and analysis of what worked right and what didn't. I don't envision this thing as being a big giant committee, that's a big discussion thing, but rather different action groups of people who are expert in those particular areas to look at all those things. I'll give you another example, the CERT program. How did the CERT program function? What were the problems with it? The CERT team leader is doing an lengthy after action as we speak, and he's the guy who should, who is able to speak intelligently on that subject and make recommendations and implement those recommendations for the future. So this is not an investigation into malfeasance, you know, as I've heard some people say on behalf of the city. It's, it's something that's going on in conjunction with the after-action process that the County of Los Angeles is doing. I did an interview with Sheila Kewell on the radio the other day with KPCC on this very subject, and the reporter brought up the same thing, and you say, "Well, you know, what about the investigations?" And she said, "Well, it's not really an investigation. There's gonna be an investigation as to the, you know, the cause of the fire, et cetera, but there's gonna be a detailed analysis done by an outside agency as to the conduct of the fire department," and so on and so forth. So I see our after-action group working in conjunction with the County of Los Angeles to make recommendations and relatively rapidly implement those recommendations that come up from the people who are working on it. It's not gonna be me, and it's not gonna be Skylar, or, and whoever winds up on this thing, it shouldn't be them. It should be the people who are relatively experienced and knowledgeable in those particular functional areas. So that's my concept of how this thing would work.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments? Skylar?
I would just say that I'm happy to, I think that I second what Rick's. I would just say that I'm happy to, I think that I, I second what Rick said. Mikey, if you want to go on the, I'm happy to have you go on it. I don't, you know, I, I always sort of thought it as more that, very simply, that's not a Brown Act, you know, related thing, and it was more for having conversation to say, "These are the things that we should support, and maybe if we should have a Brown Act, you know, group on something, then we would not be on that. We would really just be making the suggestion that it's somebody else that's on there." And I'd want to be very, very much clear with that, with, with people, that that's not the, that's the whole reason for doing it that way.
Yeah, personally, I feel that this is going to continue on for more than a year or two, and we should have some kind of continuance when you and I are gone. It's not something that I would feel comfortable on, having a long association with the sheriff's department, but that's up to the council. But I'd like to hear from Karen and Mike, how they feel about it.
I would like to see a committee, this ad hoc committee, be something that the community has confidence in. That's important. Every single person has questions, no matter what you did, if you stayed, if you left, if you lost your home, if you didn't. I do want to see an ad hoc committee that the community feels, again, confident in the, in the process, and, and can trust the results. I do have a question. I don't know how anybody has envisioned the committee, if it's going to be populated by perhaps an appointment from each of us council members, the way that the other commissions and committees are.
That, that's only if we go and form a subcommittee on something that's specific. So, right now, this is very much general, in the sense that Rick and I were in office during this situation, Rick in his capacity at the fire department, myself in my capacity at the city, you know, and that stuff, and being here during that, that time. So, that's a, a different experience probably than Mikey had, or you had, and unfortunately, Jay at one point became incapacitated during that, and I'm very grateful that he's okay. And I don't want to go into all of the stuff related to that, but really just saying, here's what we think would be a good idea. I don't, I'm happy to not be on that. I have no, like, it's, you know, easier on one hand for me not to be. That's totally fine, and I don't, that's, I just want to be very open about that with the, the community and anything else.
Yeah, I think the way, just hang on a second, and, and this is the reason why we had this discussion last time with Christie as to how we would set it up. And I think the idea of it being ad hoc is not that, hey, we're going to control the outcome of this report, or whatever it is. It's not that at all. It's, let's try to, let's try to fashion something that's very flexible and very specific to the functional areas, whatever they might be, and those are to be determined, but I've mentioned a few of them before, and have it be relatively light on its feet so that some of those functional areas can, can come to improvement and implementation as quickly as possible. Others will take longer, of course. Sorry, go ahead.
May I just say, I understand why an ad hoc committee is the best way to handle this. I don't question that. And I, and I believe the, the nimbleness of an ad hoc committee is the right thing. So, that, that's, I'm not concerned about that aspect of it. I want to make that clear.
I think that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Certainly, I'd give it to Christie, and then, Mike, you're up. Thanks.
I, I just wanted to say, I think when this idea emerged originally, the idea was, there were a lot of things that are being formed. The, the county is having a multi-agency kind of post-mortem investigation that is going to come up with some information. We heard tonight about an independent group that is doing interviews and will come up with some information, and I thought the idea here was to get two council members to find out what else is already being done, and then put together some information that we need for new initiatives going forward, and then see if there's a hole left that needs to be filled, and maybe come back with a recommendation if there needs to be for a citizens committee or something else, or bring back the information about what is being done that we think will answer the questions.
Thank you, Christie. That was splendid. And, Mike, your comments?
Yeah, thanks. I, I, I agree with what Karen's saying, and, and actually with everyone's saying. I, I do think we're in an interesting paradigm right now, and I've certainly gotten a lot of phone calls and letters about this, and my honest take is, right now, is that Karen and I do represent people new in the city that are willing to reach out and find resources, and talk to people without having any prior relationships or commitment with the city or actions with the city. And I understand why people are saying that, and I understand what Rick says, too. I totally get what Rick says. But I, I do worry about, a little bit about, I guess, the optics of it, and I don't think we need, I would like to see the city heal right now, and, and not cause any more controversy, and I think that, I feel personally, that Karen and I could do a very good job of bringing forward all of these ideas, and we can also all turn to other people. It's an ad hoc committee. It's, and with the conjunction of what the LA Emergency Preparedness Foundation's doing, with what the county's doing, this can be exactly what Christie said, that, that, that ad hoc committee that comes in on preparedness and recommendations for going forward. I don't know, it make, it make, in this case, it makes sense to me. And, but with that, you know, I'm...
What you're saying is that you would like to have you and Karen on that.
That, that would be my pick, to be honest.
That, that's totally fine, because it doesn't stop any of us other people from talking individually about it, and coming back with our own suggestions.
And I was trying to say that, too, a hundred percent.
I would, I'm totally fine with putting you guys on that. I don't have a problem with that, and that's fine. I have no issue with that.
All right, well, let me get back to something you just said, which is the fact that I think there's value in having people who were involved in the actual event.
Maybe we add another ad hoc committee that's that.
Or maybe have one new person and one old person on this.
I mean, that's, I'm open to that, too. I don't have...
I mean, there's value in having fresh eyes, or people who observed from the outside, but there's also a certain amount of value from understanding what's required during the actual event, and having walked in the shoes of somebody who's gone through the event itself, I think it's important to have that perspective.
Christie could, could say myself, if I was on it, as ad hoc, could I ask Rick for information that might be relative, or does that go outside of an ad hoc committee?
You could not, because as soon as you consult a third person, you've got a quorum of the...
Thank you, that's what I thought. Just wanted to confirm that.
I, I just want to clarify something, if I may. Everybody in this room went through the fire. So, we each did here up in the dais in our own way. We each had our own unique experience. We could each probably write a book on it, and everybody in the room went through it. So, I just want to make that point, we all went through the fire.
I, I don't think that anybody's discounting that. I think that what's, what's going on is the different requests that come through in terms of the protocol and how that's done with being elected in that capacity at that time, and then that's not discounting any experience that anybody else had within the city. That's all, that's all I think that Rick's saying. I think that uniquely, I think that somebody like Rick, out of anybody that's sitting up here, brings a level of experience to an emergency disaster that's far beyond what any one of us other people have.
I, I will not argue that whatsoever.
And I think that that's very valuable. So, if, in however you want to, you guys want to do this, so I would put forth, maybe at this time, we put forth and we say, "It's you, Karen, and Rick that are on this at this time." But, you know, I, I don't, you know, whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, thank you. So, additionally, I'd like to chime in on this one. I appreciate Mike and Karen looking forward to taking care of us through the next few years on this ad hoc committee. This committee might be the ones that suggest Rick or Skylar, or someone of that, you know, that elevated level in the fire department, be on the county's part of this review. So, I think if the ad hoc committee were the ones that said, "Rick, you're our nomination for the county's evaluation," and then we have fresh, new members kind of lead the ad hoc committee, that's the way Rick can still be involved at his capacity as a fire captain, and we still have people that will be here for more than a year or two after the rest of us are gone. And maybe that's the way we should evaluate it. I'm just putting this forward.
I appreciate that suggestion. I don't know if the county has formulated how they're going to add members to their committee or their investigation. Have, have we missed any opportunity to, to do that?
No, there's not been any missed opportunities. The supervisor's office is still formulating how their task force will be developed, but my understanding from speaking with the supervisor herself is that there will be at least one representative from all of the cities involved in the Woolsey Fire, as well as that incorporated area, and that they will be providing us with an official notice about that so that that item can come to council, so one or two members can be selected by the council to serve on that task force.
Thank you very much for the clarification, Riva. And if that's an avenue that we could pursue, we could move on, but that's up to five members here, so is there, we have any more speakers on this?
Rick, do you have feelings about this suggestion that Jefferson just made?
What suggestion?
I think we're kind of like ducking in circles right now.
I think we should focus on this and not worry about the county thing. The county has yet to be, that has yet to, you know, play out and...
Why don't, why don't we leave this the way that this is right now? And as soon as we're ready to develop the subcommittees and those kind of things, we can go ahead and address that.
Well...
Or if we don't want to do that, then somebody make a suggestion, other than myself, as to what you would like to see happen.
I would like to see Mike and Karen on this ad hoc committee with the understanding that we know the county is going to do this, that we look forward to one of you more experts to be on the bigger committee.
I would second the motion. With no disrespect to anyone's experience at all, zero, for what I view to be for the hopeful benefit of the city.
I want to reiterate what Mike just said. I, as much as anybody, appreciate every, every person's involvement, be it volunteer, I don't mean any disrespect to, to Rick or to anybody from the fire department, the sheriff, the CHP, or the city.
So, do you want to do a roll call? Or do you want to just...
Well, I, the, who seconded the motion? Because I made the motion, and Mike seconded it, that we look forward to Mike and Karen participating on this, and my understanding is that when the county comes forward, that we have this discussion and send our professionals to that county level. So, I know that's not part of what we can vote on, but that would be the intention of my proposal. That was seconded by Mike. So, I guess we'll do a vote. All in favor of my proposal for Mike and Karen on the Disaster Response and Recovery Ad Hoc Committee, with a second from Mike. All in favor? Say aye.
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 And the motion carries.
The motion carries three to two.
We're on to outside agency for city members here, California Contract Cities Association. I have been the alternative. I've only been to one meeting. Karen's already been up to Sacramento and meeting with those folks, and she's done a fine job of that. I would like to see if that's what the council agrees on, that Karen be our delegate, and unless one of you either wants to be an alternate, I'll stay as alternate.
I'd love to be an alternate. I'd love to be involved any way I can.
Great.
Very interested in this.
Okay.
But, yeah. Karen, are you interested? I assume?
I'm very interested.
Excuse me, very interested.
I'd like to nominate Karen as the primary, and Mikey as a alternate.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Next up, JPIA. Rick has been running that. He's been doing most of the meetings. I've only been to two. If there's, do we want to change that, Rick? Are you still up for that? The one meeting I went to was way south and interesting.
Anybody want that?
Well, what, just, I'll be real quick with the explanation. The JPIA is how we get our insurance as a municipality, and we collaborate with other municipalities of our size so that we can keep our insurance rates down. And it's interesting to see that. I, I did have a, a great meeting. I learned a lot, and I reported it to the council and to the members of the public, but we still need somebody to do this, and it's, it's very valuable, and it's important.
Wait, Rick, are you, you're doing this? I missed that.
Mikey, I think it's probably something that you might be interested in doing.
That's your way of saying you don't want to do it? And I'll take that, then.
All right, I'll nominate Mikey and Jefferson as the alternate for the California JPIA.
Okay, I'll second it, and for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to nominate myself as the delegate, and Rick as the alternate for the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California.
Since your terrific knowledge of powers, Skylar, I, I would second that if Rick's still up for it.
I'm up for it.
Okay, second is by me for Skylar and Rick on the CPA-SC. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here's one I don't know about, the Joint Power Finance Authority between the Sea of Malibu and Santa Monica College. I'm not familiar with that one, so I'll have to look for Skylar to pick up on that and elaborate.
I've actually never been to a meeting, because Laura went to all the meetings for that, so I believe that that's, what that deals with is how we're working, the city works with the Santa Monica College in terms of financing and funding all of those projects. So, as you know, the old courthouse that was referenced earlier is gone, not the courthouse, the jail, sheriff's station is completely demolished. It's no longer there, and they are starting construction on that project, full steam ahead. So, I would like to nominate someone actually other than myself to be on that, because I've never been on it before.
I'd be happy to do it.
So, I'd like to nominate Karen as the primary, and maybe Mikey as an alternate.
I'd love to be alternate on that.
Great.
I'm big on that one.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the Council of Governments, the COG. Once again, I've only been to one of those. Laura took most of those meetings, and she was very active in it, so this is, for the people out there, it's Hidden Hills, Calabasas, Agora, and Westlake. We are the COG. I represent the COG on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission and one other commission, but this is a valuable one. It is somewhat time-consuming, and you will be involved with your fellow communities. I look forward to having somebody else take the lead on this.
Can I add that the next meeting is tomorrow morning at 8:30 in Calabasas?
Consider, as long as the roads are open.
You can take a helicopter.
I'm very interested in this one, too, but I don't know about 8:30 tomorrow. That's a lot, short notice, but still. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested, too. I don't know about...
I, I am as well.
Can we get possibly a consensus between the two of you for the COG, between Karen and Mikey, who would be the alternate and who would be the prime?
I'd be happy to be the primary member. I've met some of the people. I spent time with some of them at an event hosted by the LA, Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters in December, and then just last weekend in Sacramento. I'm, I'm very interested in that. I'd be happy to be the primary member.
And, Mike, would you be the alternate, taking my position?
Yeah, sure.
I will nominate Karen as the primary, and Mikey as the alternate for the COG.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll nominate Rick Mullen and our Public Works Director for the LA International Airport Community Noise Roundtable.
Just for the people out in the public watching.
Second, third.
I just wanted to elaborate a little bit, real quickly. So, those of you that have been sending your emails to Rick directly, continue to do so, it sounds like, with this nomination. Rick has been very active in it. He's protecting your airspace above your homes and the noise value that are being created. It's going to become more valuable and a, and a bigger resource for us to participate in. Rick's carried the, the gavel on that, and... on that, and if he wants to do it again, I would nominate Rick along with Skylar or whoever wants to.
No, I'll continue doing it for the Public Works. It's kind of diminished in importance as we're going on other things, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. League of California Cities, I do that anyway, and Karen will be moving on with me. The Subcommittee, I'll be doing that one. And the Metric Paul and Authority. I've been following this one online in the past. It's interesting to see where all this money goes. And I'll take that one as well. Santa Monica Bay Watershed Council, I've been on that one and going to those meetings. And Skylar, do we need somebody else that wants to be an alternate? Because I've been doing that one for two and a half years now successfully.
I would support you to continue doing that.
Thank you for that confidence.
Yep.
Same on Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting. There's one next week.
I would support you to stay there.
Yep, I know you love that.
Okay, that's, that's a fun one. Okay, the MRCA Advisory Committee, we're talking about Pat.
I'd like to keep Pat on that if she's willing.
I agree, but...
I imagine she's willing.
She's willing.
She's willing.
I believe so. All in favor of Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have three here.
Could I ask a question about that? Is there any need for an alternate?
The one where Pat Healy is on it?
Yes.
They meet the same night as the council.
You, you can't do it, because it's, the meetings are the same night as the same council.
I wasn't talking about myself.
Oh.
A member of the public who's interested and knowledgeable.
Yeah, who, who is it?
No.
No, as, as far as I...
We can, we can suggest an alternate now, and then...
Sorry. As, as far as I know, they, there's no support for an alternate position for that since it's only an advisory committee. So there's one appointment from the city, and that's it.
Thank you.
Karen, did you want to nominate somebody else, was what my question was?
No, not, not in lieu of Pat. No.
Got it.
Trails Working Group, we haven't had that meeting in some time, and...
What, you missed, uh...
SCAG.
Oh, they're SCAG, right. Okay.
And the SCAG appointment is actually something that's made by the COG. So they'll make that appointment.
Copy that. So that's the five, the five cities in unison make that decision. And Water Education Foundation, Passon, it's vacant, anyway.
Don't even know what it is.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much.
So that sums up seven B, and now we're on seven C.
Yep, seven C. Flammable Landscaping, Mayor Pro Tem, Karen Farrer. And we have a presentation, and we have comments. And here we go. A presentation first, or are we just going to leave this at council? Do you have a presentation?
It's a council item, so I'll let Mayor Pro Tem discuss it.
I don't have a formal presentation. I do want to say that there's a big concern that we don't just repeat the situation we've just found ourselves in on November 9th. And I would like the city to, I'd like to direct staff to look into an ordinance surrounding rebuilding and non-native, highly flammable vegetation that just continues to put the community at risk.
For me, that sounds very valid. The, as I mentioned earlier, the plant palette is something that the planning department would probably look forward to having some direction on. And it doesn't look like we would have to elaborate this with a lot of work, because they have some of this already. But we do have a speaker, and that's Robert, or is that, can you read that?
Kerbeck.
Okay. So Robert, if you'd like to speak before we move on this matter.
Thank you. My name is Robert Kerbeck, and I've lived at 30040 Harvester Road for 20 years. And as you all probably know, that's about ground zero for the fire. Very few homes on my street made it. My home did untouched. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself and my wife, so you know about our roots in the community. My wife, Guardian Fox, is the chairperson of the Malibu Shark Fund. I am a writer, and I teach creative writing for the city of Malibu. And I've bought a lot of surfboards from people on the committee. I was recently asked not to write a book about the fire, but to write an essay for the New York Times. But the New York Times dawdled, and the Los Angeles Times published it. It was called "The Accidental Firefighter." It was a Sunday op-ed. And I say that not really to talk about my writing, but to talk about the experience that I had fighting the fire with my wife and 16-year-old son is one I would not like to repeat. While we saved our home because we were prepared, and we had FOS check, and we had good luck, I really believe the main reason our home was untouched by flames was because we had no pine trees, we had no eucalyptus trees, we had no palm trees. Our brush was super clear. However, I personally witnessed while fighting the fire, my neighbor's eucalyptus trees that I had worried about for years catch fire, and a fireball fly across the sky and land on another neighbor's house and burned that house to the ground. So no matter how good my clearance is, I am at the mercy of my neighbors, right? We are all at the mercy of our neighbors. And if the city doesn't step in and help us, we are doomed to have another fire like this five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, whatever. We've done a view ordinance. We've done a dark skies ordinance. Those are great ordinances. They're wonderful. I'm sure they were a lot of hard work. They're going to improve quality of life, but they're not going to save lives. Right? A flammable landscape ordinance can actually save people's lives, and certainly would save homes. If the fuel load had been reduced in Malibu Park, which was a tinderbox, and still is a tinderbox, if the wind goes in a different direction, the ukes that didn't, didn't blow this time will blow the next time. Right? So I would really be grateful, I'm especially grateful to Karen for bringing this matter to the council, and I am happy to help in any way that I can, because I think it's a critical issue for us and for the next generation behind us. So thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Well spoken.
Karen, if I may add to your item, would you also consider looking at increasing the brush clearance distances within this item?
If that's within our power, sure.
That's a fire department code.
Yeah.
Fire inspection code item.
We can, we can increase it. We just can't go below the minimum that the fire department, the fire code requires. We could certainly increase it.
We also have a county department that we rely on as well, the weed abatement guys. So, yeah. And then we also have other concerns about the ESHA that, that I, it's going to be difficult to get into. Lot line adjustments, there's a number of things that could complicate this, the good effort that you're putting forward, if we go too deep and too far. Just, I, I think what she's got here is really right on.
Okay, keep it simple. I just don't know how you're ever going to enforce somebody to water their plants.
Well...
Because I don't care what kind of plant it is, but if it's dry and it's dead, it's going to burn.
I understand that, but if we move forward with the plant palette, the, our building department already has no palms already. And I know that's in there, because I've seen homes that have had to remove their palms. But this is a deeper, in-depth discussion, and one that we should be having. And I think the definition here is, it's well-written, and it's well-crafted, and we can move forward with it. I think we need to do this.
I, I agree. This is on my list. I was glad to see you had it, so I'll take it off my list. I would want to see about, as far as adding things, sort of not just the plants and landscaping, but other things like railroad ties. So I, that, yeah. Fighting the fire myself, railroad ties were the biggest nightmare. It's, it's cost hours and hours and hours. And yes, there's a difference in them, but, so I, I'm hoping to include anything outside that's burnable. And I think there's a huge amount of amazing information on, on the kind of landscaping that, you know, we can, we can make progress quickly, because people have done a great science in this. And I don't know what you've seen, but I'll share what I have with you, since I, I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I applaud you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Well, the core of this is flammable landscaping, and as long as railroad ties are used in landscaping, I guess that falls under this as well.
Also, the railroad ties are a continu- continuous disruption of this, of the environment. Yeah. So there are alternatives to, to telephone poles and railroad ties, and they are natural, like cedar. And there are several other woods that work. They do burn, but they don't pollute. So, well, maybe we'll explore that as we go into it, but how do we feel about it?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this and bring back some sort of an ordinance that goes into flammable landscaping and identifying what can and can't be used.
I'll second the motion.
May I just say, the wording here is to direct staff to bring back an item to discuss potential restrictions of certain flammable plants and trees in landscaping plans. I think we are going to have to add not just plants and trees, but, as I said, landscaping materials, which would include things like railroad ti- railroad ties.
I actually don't believe that railroad ties are allowed under the current code at all, because they're not allowed to put them in the soil, because they leach chemicals. But people use them. So that's, they're legal, you're not allowed to use them. That's the reality of it. It already exists. So, you know, have at it with people that already have them, that they ain't going to remove them.
Yeah, that's probably true. And the other thing, too, that's part of it, that if anyone fought this in the fire would be wood chips. Good lord, wood chips were a nightmare.
They make great embers. So we have a motion and a second, and can we get a vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. And we're prepared for adjournment. I have a couple of things that I have to add to that. We're going to adjourn in the memory of Debbie and Millie, if that's okay, and a quick story on Millie's husband, and his, his nickname was Dynamite Decker. And those of you who have been around a while and building out here know what I'm talking about. What a terrific history this family has had in, in Malibu, even though they're not in the city. So I'd like to make this adjournment in the memory of Debbie Perucker and Millie Decker. And additionally, with the adjournment, I have to add that this meeting is adjourned till 4:00 PM on Monday, January 28th, 2019.
May I add, I'd like to acknowledge that John Perucker and Debbie's daughter, is it Caitlin or Emily? Caitlin are here with us, sitting with Sharri Latta, and I thank you for being here tonight.
Sorry for your loss. Okay. That's all we have to do, then, and we're good to go. And thank you very much for participating and staying with us till 10:15. Meeting adjourned.